Good evening. I call this November 23 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville website. On November 26, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. Master Officer Hogan has served as police officer for three years and is currently a patrol officer assigned to uniform patrol. We appreciate them being here as our master arms this evening. Instead of providing tonight's medication myself, I have asked Imam Abd-Nassir Zori of the Islamic Center of Morrisville to join us this evening to provide it. Imam, if you would please approach the microphone behind the town clerk, the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We begin in the name of Allah, most merciful, most compassionate. Oh, Lord, you have said, indeed Allah orders justice and good conduct and giving to relatives and forbids immorality and bad conduct and oppression. He admonishes you that perhaps you will be reminded. Oh, Lord, please help us to be kind and just. Oh, Lord, you have said, indeed Allah commands you to render trust to whom they are due, and when you judge between people, to judge with justice. Excellent is that which Allah instructs you. Indeed, Allah is ever all-hearing and all-seeing. Oh, Allah, please help us to preserve the trust. Oh, Lord, you have said and fulfill the covenant of Allah when you have taken it, and do not break oath after their confirmation while you have made Allah over you a witness. Indeed, Allah is all-knowing of what you do. Oh, Allah, please keep us, help us to keep our oaths. Oh, Lord, you have said, oh mankind, there has come to you instruction from your Lord and healing for what's in the breasts and guidance and mercy for those who believe. Oh, Lord, please fill our hearts with mercy and guidance. Oh, Lord, you have said corruption has appeared throughout the land and the sea by reason of what the hands of the people have earned, and so he may let them taste part of the consequences of their actions, that perhaps they will return to righteousness. Oh, Lord, please help us to avoid corruption and return to righteousness. Oh, Lord, you have said mankind, indeed we have created you from male and a female, and we have made you into nations and tribes, that you may know one another. Indeed, the most noble and honorable amongst you in the sight of Allah is the most righteous. Indeed, Allah is well acquainted of what you do. Oh, Lord, please help us get to know one another and be righteous in our words and in our actions. Amen.
Thank you.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
All who are able, please stand and join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Would any council member like to share anything at this time? Seeing none, is there a motion in a second to adopt this evening's agenda?
Sir, move.
A second?
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries seven zero unanimously. At this time, I would like to recognize Town Manager Page.
Thank you, Mayor. As we've planned for the September 14 organizational meeting and how to both protect social distancing protocols that we put in place, as well as recognize the celebratory nature of that meeting, we have proposed to Town Council a reception prior to the Town Council meeting that would be held in Fire Station One. To most effectively do that, council may want to consider changing the meeting time start from 6:00 PM to 6:30 that would allow reception to occur from 5:30 to 6:15, and then council would be able to get here and prepare for that evening's agenda. Should council wish to do that, a motion to do that would give us enough time to adequately notify the public.
Okay, and she shared this via email last week. Was there any discussion before we entertain a motion to move our start time to 6:30? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to move our start time over December 14 meeting to 6:30 start time?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously seven zero. Thank you very much, Town Manager Page. Anything else?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. There are eight items on this evening's consent agenda. A capital project ordinance amendment for 2021 bond referendum projects, resolutions authorizing a design-build contract amendment, and a Phase II-A design-build contract for Fire Station Number Three, a resolution and BOA for the purchase of real property at 105 Church Street, ordinances amending the effective dates of previously approved ordinances, ordinance amendments related to SB 300, and approval of two sets of October meeting minutes. Before I entertain a motion, would any council member like to remove any of these items from the consent agenda for discussion? I'd like to recognize Council Member Fender.
Mayor, I'd like to remove the update on Senate Bill 30 from the consent agenda.
SB 300, item 6F as in Foxtrot?
Yes.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item 6F in Foxtrot.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Who made the second, please?
I did.
And Council Member Robody on the second. All those in favor of making the amended motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries seven zero. Thank you very much. We'll now recognize interim Chief Pete Acosta to discuss item 6F as the item pulled from the consent agenda. Thank you, interim chief. I'd like to recognize Council Member Fender. Any particular questions or just a general summary of what you're circling for?
I was just wanting to understand better what is changing.
Sure. So what really affects us the most in Senate Bill 300 is revising some of our ordinance. So currently, our ordinances read that if otherwise stated, that our ordinances are a misdemeanor. And what we're really looking to do is change the verbiage on our ordinances so that they are infractions, and we will keep the ones that we think are most important that need to be misdemeanors. So that's really the easiest way to explain it. We don't want our police officers going out charging folks with misdemeanors or putting themselves in a position where they have to arrest somebody over, you know, a planning violation. So we've been very clear in the memo of which ones we think are most important to remain criminalized. So what we're really doing is decriminalizing our ordinances except for the ones that we've listed in the memo.
So changing the default state of most of the things?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay. Were there any in particular that you were concerned about, or do you feel that's enough? Council Member Fender?
I'm trying to pull it up. So which ones are remaining a misdemeanor?
So the ones, yep, so the ones that will be remaining a misdemeanor are the ones that, like Section 10-3. And we'll also be changing the, well, we'll be changing the wording in that from handguns to firearms. Certain acts prohibited during emergencies will be a misdemeanor. Discharging firearms within corporate limits will be a misdemeanor.
Okay.
And we're removing the 58-2 that is actually supported in, under general statute, so we don't really need that.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, interim chief. Appreciate your help. Moving on to item eight, presentations.
Hold on, man.
Need to vote.
Okay. Thank you. So we want to go ahead and vote on item 6F. So I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance amendments related to SB 300.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously seven zero. Thank you, Mayor Pretem. We have seven presentations tonight. A proclamation recognizing pancreatic cancer awareness month, retirement recognition of Martha Marty Saunders and Hannah Wang, sorry, a Wake County School District presentation, a Greater Triangle commuter rail up project update, a Morrisville Smart Shuttle update, and an esports presentation. So looking forward to a lot of good presentations. Mayor Pretem Johnson will read the proclamation recognizing pancreatic cancer awareness month.
Okay, this proclamation is recognizing pancreatic cancer awareness month in November. Whereas in 2021, an estimated 60,430 people in the United States will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, one of the deadliest cancers, and 48,220 will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer surpassed breast cancer in 2019 to become the third leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States, and it is projected to become the second leading cause by 2023. And whereas compared to the other major cancers, pancreatic cancer has the lowest five-year survival rate at just 10%. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in late stages, and 72% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis. And whereas approximately 1,500 deaths will occur in North Carolina in 2021, and whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world, and whereas there will be an estimated 558,000 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed worldwide in 2025, and whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Morrisville are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer, and research into early detection causes and effective treatments. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize November 2021 as pancreatic cancer awareness month in the Town of Morrisville.
Thank you very much.
Can I just make a couple of quick-
Yes, please do.
Quick remarks. As many in this room know, I lost my dad to pancreatic cancer 20 years ago last month. My family and I started the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network affiliate here in the Triangle. So for those that are affected by pancreatic cancer today, or may be affected in the future, please go to pancan.org to learn about all the services that are available to you. There's a patient services, service that is free to any caregiver, any patient, any family member. There are a host of services that are available to you, so please go to pancan.org to find out more if you need. And if you can't remember that when the time comes, you can't remember that website, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. Folks reach out to me on a monthly basis to find out about where to turn, and we are all here, all the volunteers here in the area, in our affiliate, as well as the organization that's based in California. We are all here to help when it is your, when you are in need. So please keep that in mind. And the last thing I'm going to say is, we have a 5K walk every spring, April 30th of 2022. We are praying that we're going to have an in-person event after two years of being virtual. If you'd like to join us, you can go to purplestride.org/RaleighDurham to learn about the walk that will be at NC State Centennial Campus again on April 30. And we always say, Purple Stride is not all we do, but all we do depends on Purple Stride. So please join us on April 30. Thank you.
Thank you for your advocacy and engagement on an important topic. Michelle Stiegel, our planning director, will facilitate the next presentation. Ms. Stiegel.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I want to recognize Marty Saunders on her upcoming entire retirement. Marty will be retiring from the town on December 31. She has been employed with the town since 2006 and worked, or 2016, and worked in the planning department during that time as a planning technician. Marty has reviewed thousands of plot plans during her time with the town. So if you're not familiar, if you've ever built a single-family home or a town home, Marty has reviewed each and every one of those plans to make sure setbacks, lot coverage, building height, and other requirements had been met, and there have been a lot of those. She's written hundreds of zoning compliance letters, reviewed sign permits, reviewed special event permit applications. She's the main department contact, so if you call to talk to someone in the planning department, Marty's the one answering the phone and greeting you. And in doing that, she fields a number of questions on a daily basis. And she also serves as the secretary to the planning and zoning board. Marty actually handles a very high volume of work on a daily basis. She does it behind the scenes, she does it without incident, and she's just done a great job in service to the town over these last five years. Marty, I want to congratulate you on your retirement. I hope that you enjoy some time for yourself, some time with your grandkids, but we are going to miss you. And we have a small something for Marty.
Do you want to say something?
I didn't really plan anything to say, but I have enjoyed working with everybody that I've worked with while I've been at the town. We have a great planning department, and we're a great team, and I've been happy to be a part of that.
Okay. Thank you so much, and I'd like to recognize Mayor Pretem Johnson, a former planning and zoning board member, to speak on behalf of the council to thank you from the residence.
So Marty, it is really a thrill to see you in this room tonight. We don't typically get to see you at a council meeting, and as Michelle said, you do a lot behind the scenes. And many have heard me say this over the years, that as a council member, we set a lot of policy, we make a lot of decisions here, but the actual work that gets done is by people like Marty Sanders. You are the one that makes things happen here in the Town of Morrisville, and we thank you very much for your service. I also say a lot that as elected officials, we know we want to leave a place better than we found it. And I know you, as a public servant and a dedicated Morrisville employee, follow that same golden rule, that you want to find a place, or you want to leave the place better than you found it, and you absolutely have done that. So thank you, Marty, very much, and absolutely well-deserved. Enjoy, enjoy your retirement. I'm glad you'll be here for another month, though.
Thank you very much.
If both of you would like to come up front just for a photo, we'll stay here and you guys can get something. Sure, it's up to you guys. Yeah. Let's have all the planning up here. Let's go. That's wonderful. Randy Little, Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources Director, and Jerry Allen, Community Services Supervisor, will make the next presentation.
This is wonderful. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. I have the, excuse me, opportunity to actually kind of recognize her accomplishments. Hannah was probably the first person that I didn't actually see, but actually read. She and I kind of conversated back and forth via email prior to me getting here, so, you know, the way she responded to me and those kind of things made it truly a treasure and a blessing to actually have that kind of communication prior to actually entering into the workspace. So I don't have a lot of historical content to provide, but, you know, the last five months that I've been here primarily, she's been a great person to see every morning, as I arrived at the office, "Good morning" and those kind of things. So I know you'll be leaving us on the 6th of December, which is fairly around the corner, but I want to say thank you for everything you've done. I will yield to Jerry because he has some other information that he can provide, but thank you very much, and I do appreciate you.
Thank you, Randy. You know, it's always a happy time when someone retires. We're always happy for them and what they're looking forward to. But I will say, this is an experience for me that has some sadness to it. When I first came to work here in 2007, I met Hannah when she was working as a three-quarter time position at Suter Fork Community Center. And there wasn't a time that I didn't walk through the door that she didn't have a smile on her face or a nice thing to say. Later that year, we had a full-time position come open, and Hannah applied. I asked the staff at Suter Fork for a little background. Everything they said was positive, and then they looked at me and said, one of the supervisors said, "But we're going to be mad if you hire her, because we don't want her to leave us." And I got to be honest and say, that's the way I feel today. We don't want you to leave, but we're very happy for you and Jesse to be able to enjoy your retirement together. Jesse, thank you for being here. That's Hannah's husband, who has helped us volunteer at many events and helped us through several things. As we were saying with Marty, Hannah is one of those people who, you know, works behind the scenes every day to make sure things get done and make sure they get done well. She's always tried her best to do her job well. She's always been very friendly to our community, very helpful to our community. I can honestly say, I think she's probably helped thousands of people in her, what, 15 years now? Probably helped thousands of people between facility reservations, registration for programs, just general information, then when they called about our parks and about the town. You know, she's that first voice you hear. And many times, I've had people tell me how helpful she was, how friendly she was. But I will say, on the internal side, if you ever turned in a bill wrong, she'd make sure to tell you. She'd make sure to let you know if you needed more information, more backup documentation. She, like I said, she made sure things were done well, but she always did it in a very nice way. She never complained about anything that I can remember, regardless of how cold it was at Halloween, when she would come out to help at that, or how hot it was at July 3. You know, there was always a smile on her face and nice things to say. Hannah, we're going to miss you very much. Only a few more days with us, but thank you for the last 15 years.
And I'd like to also say-
Oh, thank you.
I remember her smiling face so many times before I was on the council, helping me out at both locations. And I'd like to once again recognize Mayor Pretem Johnson to sort of speak on behalf of the council.
So Jerry, you are 100% correct when you talk about Hannah Wang and a smiling face. That is how we all know you, Hannah, so thank you. And Jerry's right, you have touched the lives of so many here in the town, and you are a beautiful representation of this organization to the outside-facing public. So thank you for all you've done, and I am so thrilled your husband is here. We like to thank spouses of our employees as well, because we know the sacrifices you make. Public servants, as Jerry said, work all kinds of crazy hours and put in all kinds of time that affects your family. So thank you so much for sharing Hannah with us. Thank you. And Hannah, have a wonderful retirement. On behalf of all of us, we wish you all the success and happiness in the world, and look forward to hearing about your adventures moving forward.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm very grateful, and when you like what you do, the work doesn't feel like work. So thank you all for your support. I hope everyone has a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Want to come up on the front for a photo as well? And you can bring your husband up and Parks and Rec if you like. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
At this time, representatives from the Wake County Public School System and Wake Tech Community College will facilitate our next presentation. You have three hours.
Mayor, council members, Ms. Page and staff, we're excited to be here tonight. Thank you so much for having us. We are here to present a cooperative and innovative high school for the Town of Morrisville. And I have a staff here, I'd like to represent and share their names, because we're really excited to share all this with you. So I have with me, first, I'd like to say thank you to Board Member Chris Hegarty for being here tonight. We also have the Western Area Superintendent Cedric Williams, and the new principal of the school, Abby Stotzenberg. Also with us tonight, who we're going to present, we have Terry Allen from Wake Tech Community College. She's the dean of educational pathways and partnerships. Dr. Kimberly Lane from Magnet Curriculum Enhancement Programs. We have Paul Domenico from Curriculum Enhancement Programs, and Betty Parker from Real Estate Services. So with that, I will turn it over to staff, and we will begin the presentation. Thank you.
Need help with the mouse, or?
The mouse there in the drawer.
Oh, in the drawer.
Yeah. Thank you very much for having us tonight, and we do want to share with you exciting news about a new Wake County Public School High School. This is an early college model, so we just wanted to share a little bit about what the early college model is. It's been around the state for some time. I Googled it as I was sitting there, because I was thinking we were approaching about 140 in the state. So as of 2019, we had 133 in the state of North Carolina. And North Carolina is well-known for its cooperative, innovative high school program, which allows our high school students to earn, potentially earn an associate's degree in conjunction with a local partner, community college, or a higher ed partner. We are very appreciative of our Wake Tech partnership, and Dean Allen is here tonight to represent Wake Tech in our new program. It is for students in grades nine through 13, and as I said, it does allow them the opportunity to earn an associate's degree, which is a little different than what our high school students can do in terms of taking college credits in high school. They can do that through the college and career promise, also through the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. But this does give them a level up on college, not just credits, but opportunities to save costs. We know what tuition's costing today, so it's a tremendous opportunity for our families and our students. It is a high school diploma, so we- It is a high school diploma, so we get a lot of questions about, is this a separate high school experience? It is very much a high school. You just have the opportunity to earn those college credits along the way. So it is high school in the same building where you also take your college courses. Our students do have the opportunity to also earn industry credits. It is usually a much smaller personalized environment. Most of our early college high schools were no more than 400 per, usually it's about 100 per grade level. This new school will start with 75 in our ninth and 10th grade, and then we'll be adding students each year until we get to that fifth year, or that 13th year. We are very intentional around the staffing, so that we are supporting college students in high school, so that they are taking college courses, they are meeting the requirements of college expectations, so making sure we put those support structures in place. We are very intentional that our early colleges are representative of the diversity of Wake County Public Schools. And we work toward our first-generation college students in particular. So we have a goal within the Magnet Office of trying to reach about 70% early college entrance individuals for these programs. Tuition textbooks, materials are free for students, which is part of the cooperative innovative high school, which is sometimes different than what we see at the Career and College Promise. We wanted to celebrate, as we're opening a new school here in Morrisville, that we also have several other early college programs. And our new principal is coming from one of those, it's Burnham Malone. But we also work with Wake Tech at North Wake College of Career, Burnham Malone, and with Wake Early College of Health Sciences. We have Wake STEM in partnership with NC State and our Wake Young Men's and Young Women's Leadership Academies with St. Albans. So we are experienced in this work and very happy to be adding Wake Early College on the campus of Wake Tech here in Morrisville community. We're going to share a little bit more. I'm going to invite my colleague, Paul Domenico, to come up and share about the application process. And he may very well find something that I missed.
You can read well. Thank you. So as Dr. Lane noted, so for our early college high schools, they are application-only schools. So students across the district can apply for the early colleges that we have here in the district. So in order to apply for them and for any of our early colleges, you have to be actively enrolled in the school district. So that means that students just need to have a student ID number with the Wake County Public School System, and then they can go onto the online portal, and then they can apply for our early colleges that we have available. There are, of course, as Dr. Lane noted, we have this is our seventh home reopening. Students can choose up to five early colleges for choice, so they can rank them from one through five. We always encourage students, whenever they're applying for it, and families, only put it on there if you're interested in the programs they have there. You don't want to put the Health Sciences program if you're not interested in getting into a Health Sciences career. Same thing with the new early college we're opening up here at our RTP campus. It's going to be focusing on information and biotechnology. So if that's your passion, if that's your interest, then that's a school that you want to apply for. If it's not, don't put that as one of your options, because you may get it, and then what do you do from there? So again, it is online. Students currently enrolled in WCPSS will submit, that are currently in Wake County Public Schools, their records will automatically go over to the application. And then students that are not currently enrolled in Wake County Public Schools must register for the upcoming year. So sometimes we have families and their students are in eighth grade, whether at a charter or private school or homeschool. So they don't have an active number within the system, so they can go and register and get an active number. And that way they can still apply for the early college if they'd like to have that option and be considered for it in the following year. And if that's the case, then we work with wherever schools are in, to get their records and transfer that over to the online system, so that we have that when we go through the scoring process. Once we have all the online submissions for the application, then we will go, the schools will go and look through the applications, we score them, submit them, so they can be then ranked in, so we figure out and let the system pick who will come to the new early college. For this round, we have, the application season's open right now. It started in mid-October and it'll close December 14th. So all families who are eligible to go to an early college next year, they have to be down until December 14th to apply online. For schools, if they don't fill all their slots, we will consider and open up a second round, which comes later on. So right now, I'm going to turn it over back to Glenn Corozan, who's going to share more about criteria and what we do on application. So our students select. Their essays that they submit are specific to the particular schools that they're applying. They also submit their grades and test scores via this online portal, as well as teacher recommendations that get turned in. As part of that selection process, then, Wake County weights the early, the first-generation students as the higher students that they want to see first. And so when we go through the selection criteria, those students are pulled out first or self-identified. They're then selected into their seats, and then any remaining seats that are filled are done so through the random selection of the criteria. All of the students are then given a test score after their original essay. So that's how we're able to determine who's able to be weighted from the beginning and then, and then set forth at the end for the random selection for filling remaining seats. Right? And then we'll learn more about the school itself. So a lot of the information was a high-level information about the old early college system and networks that we have here within the district. Of course, we're extremely excited about the newest early college that will be opened next year, and that is the Wake Early College of Information and Biotechnology. So that will be open in August of 2022, so students are, can apply now to be considered for this early college. And it will be located directly on Wake Tech's RTP campus. They just finished construction on RT2, the second building on campus, and Wake Tech has been generous enough to designate the second floor of that building for the primary use for our high school, for our high school students to take their high school courses there. And then that way, when they're 11th and 12th grade and taking the college courses, they're already on campus and they can take their college courses there too. We are opening with just ninth and 10th graders this upcoming year, so we'll have 75 each of those two grade levels. And we hope to go out to completion and have 150 total students to open. There are plans to open a new building here close to the RTP campus. It's going to be where the new Parkside Middle School is being constructed. So in 2025, they are looking to open a new building that will have the house of ninth and 10th graders here. So there will be dual use on that campus, if you would. And that's going to allow us to go to the full capacity that we can use for an early college. The state gives you a maximum of 100 students per grade level, and we can only get 75 students on the RTP campus, but we would love to open this up to get to full capacity. So when that new campus opens, it will move ninth and 10th graders there. That allows to have 100 students per grade level. And then when they start their college courses, they'll still come to the RTP campus to take their college courses there. So in that, we're projecting the opening for 2025 for that. So as you've heard a couple of times, we're extremely excited that last week, the board announced Abby Stotzenberg as the new principal for this next early college. And she and Terry Allen from Wake Tech are going to talk a little bit more about the specific programming that we have available at this new early college.
Good evening. We are excited to be able to offer this school through Wake County Schools, and I'm honored to be named the principal of this school. It's important to note, I think, that these students will meet the requirements of any other high school student they would need for graduation. And on top of that, will be earning additional credits through the community college program. It's considered dual enrollment, so they're getting high school GPA, college GPA simultaneously. They've got transcripts in both, they better really watch both, both elements of their GPA and the portions that they're taking. The program choices will be computer programming, cybersecurity, network management, and biotechnology. And then students that fulfill all of the graduation requirements and want to continue in that program area can opt to do an optional grade 13, which means that they defer graduation for a year and can get an additional year of community college for free, tuition-free, that the books are paid for. It's a wonderful opportunity for any student that has found their pathway and wants to continue in that way. They are considered to be on track for an associate's degree and on track for a four-year college or university upon graduation from this new high school. And I think I'll let Terry talk about the industry certification and credentials.
As Abby said, we will have four different programs. Three will be focused on IT, one will be in biotechnology. And the hope of these programs is that students will also be involved with industry. Students will, for each program, there's going to be stackable credentials. So students will take a number of classes and then they will earn a Wake Tech certificate. And those Wake Tech certificates will stack to the degree program, which will be a full associate and applied science degree. And there will also be opportunities for students to pursue industry certifications. And I'll just, I won't go in depth, but for example, with the network management degree, one of the industry certifications that students will have the opportunity to earn is the CCNA, which is the Cisco Certified Network Associate. That will be one of the sort of industry certifications that will fall under that. And so as with our other early colleges, if a student decides to take some summer classes as well as stay for grade 13, they should finish the full associate and applied science degree in those four areas and be workforce-ready or have the opportunity, some of these degrees, there are, we have articulation agreements with specific universities. Students will have the opportunity to transfer as well or become employed afterwards.
Since I strive to be like Michelle Steedall at every opportunity, I'm going to take my mask off, because I want you to see how excited you are about this, because it's a fabulous opportunity. We're pleased to share some of the drawings that Wake Tech has provided to further explain in that RT2 building, there are dedicated areas, as Paul mentioned, for those high school courses. So it's a real immersive opportunity for our kids to get in the college, be around the college as early as they possibly can. Transportation will be provided with express stops similar to a number of our Magnet programs. And of course, there'll be a cafeteria space set up and identified, so it'll have the same sort of feeling case that any of our high schools do. We've got some more decisions to be made. We're not quite finished yet. With all of our schools of this sort, we provide an opportunity for our students to participate in extracurricular activities at the nearby schools, which school has not yet been determined. But they will have that opportunity if they want to participate in sports or marching band or anything that a program of this nature doesn't have the facilities to be able to support. The bell schedule has yet to be determined as well. Most of our early college programs are on modified schedules, so that it aligns with the community college or university's program. But typically, they're set by our transportation department about one year prior to opening. So we're already there. We should have that announcement fairly soon. And of course, we'd like to share as soon as we do. This is just a quick high-level photo of the Wake Tech campus. Now, all of this is in place, of course, but just to identify, if you can see the cursor, the building's shaped a bit like a backward C is RT2, RT1. It's the first of the buildings Wake Tech has built. RT2 is the linear building at its northern end that goes east-west. That's where our primary location will be. There are some classrooms, some of the science classrooms, that have specific equipment requirements that we will share with Wake Tech that are located in RT1. But the majority of our students today will be in the RT2 building. Some of the rest of these buildings are yet to come along. And of course, for those who've been abundantly familiar with this, the red dash line realizes the edge of the airport overload. So everything that's happening here keeps us in the proper zoning and the proper alignment. And we appreciate the town's attention to that and adjustments in prior years to be able to prepare us for this success. To give you a little more feedback on what Paul mentioned, this is a school that will eventually have two sites. As you can see, the Wake Tech campus is in the middle of the Morrisville jurisdiction. So our Morrisville campus will be where we start, and eventually it will be purely for the upper grade levels that are in the college courses. We'll be moving the ninth and 10th graders to the Parkside Middle School campus. Parkside Elementary is already established and located immediately adjacent to that. So with all of our campuses that are, that are separate from the college experience, there'll be a shuttle bus available for our students to be able to go back and forth as they need to, to attend their classes on the respective campuses. For those who are wondering, the answer's 2.3 miles. It's a fairly quick commute during the school day. We wanted to identify some of the challenges that we have gone through already. It isn't a quick process to set this up. We've been working together with Wake Tech staff, with our fearless leaders like Mr. Haggett, with all of our Magnet Curriculum Enhancement folks, and with town staff to figure out the best way to approach this and make this work. In fact, in July, we first got together and started talking about this. And as you can see, as we progressed through, we hit a bit of a hiccup with COVID, as most projects did. We had hoped to be able to start last fall, this past fall. So we've gotten one year delay, but we're very excited about coming forward. We're really excited about Abby Stotzenberg. She's done a great job at Burnham Malone, and I think you'll see that she's a fabulous asset for the town. We're looking forward to opening in the fall. And as we mentioned, August of '22 is the projected opening date for the Morrisville campus. August of '25 is when Parkside Middle and the ninth and 10th grade center should be slated to open. With that, the one detail that I would mention that I think we glossed over, our Assistant Superintendent for School Choice Planning and Assignment is Glenn Corozan. He didn't identify himself, and he got up, he was gracious enough to introduce all the rest of us. You may recognize Glenn from some times we've been before you and your education committees before. He has come to us as the Senior Director of the Office of Student Assignment. So he is promoted, and we're pleased to have him in a new role. But we couldn't let him go without recognition. With that, we have all the experts you can imagine here, just in case there was a vote we wanted to have numbers, so we're here. But we thank you for your continuing support, and we're happy to answer any questions about this exciting opportunity.
Okay, wonderful. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Abadi, followed by Councilmember Skarben Johnson, please.
So the first thing that I wanted to say was just how positive the collaboration between Wake County Schools and Wake Tech has been. I have, I have five children. Four of them went to, went through high school and are staying local for college. And the last three have all taken part in the CCP program. And my oldest daughter, Brooke, went to UNC Chapel Hill with 19 credits, which is, you know, if anybody's doing the math, that's about $40,000 worth of UNC Chapel Hill. So I'm really excited about that, and this is a fantastic project for everyone. Having said that, it doesn't seem to be, so this is an application, an application program, and you're going to be drawing from all of the Wake County, any Wake County public middle school, and some that aren't public, right? So I guess I'm not really clear on how much this, the establishment of this school will affect overcrowding in, for example, like Panther Creek or Greenhoe. So could you speak to that a little bit? How many kids from Morrisville and this area of Cary do expect to be studying here?
Well, to start with, a school that opens with 150 kids is not going to have a substantial impact on Greenhoe or Panther Creek if 100% of them came to Morrisville. So we have more overcrowd than we have school capacity to deal with. But with a school like this, it's so important to reflect the diversity of the county and a focus on the first-generation college schools. So while the applications are open county-wide, I think we'll find over time that what you're going to find is children who have a passion for this. But parents are also going to take into account transportation and transportation time. So it would not be unusual, and I'll defer to Glenn, but it would not be unusual for a larger concentration of applicants to come from a portion of the county where the school is. So there are not reserved seats for student assignment. It's all application. And the real reason here, I think, is the rigor of these curriculums for these students to be able to get these college credits has to be maintained. So a child whose passion for these particular areas is really important to their success and to the success of the school as a whole. So what we're looking for are the kids that have that passion, the kids that want to be here and are going to be successful. Because as you mentioned, it's a valuable program. We're rolling them out as quickly as we can. So we expect there will probably be some benefit to the students living in Morrisville. But until we see the applications, we really can't tell you where the base is coming from, the initial applicants are coming from, or who we're getting. But I think by locating it in Morrisville, it's certainly a bit of an advantage.
So, and I'm really excited about the opportunity to get the CCNA while still in high school. I think that is just nothing short of amazing. Is the school district or Wake Tech going to cover the fees for the CCNA, which are extensive? And also, will there be a training program purchased or some, some type of thing like that, just to maximize the chances for success on the test? I mean, I know grown men that leave that test weeping, so.
I'm going to speculate wildly while I tell you all and come up. Generally, our expectation is that the fees for the college courses our students take are paid for by the school system. So books, fee supplies would be paid for by the school system. As far as any other application fees?
So the courses that students take will prepare them for the exam. And then I'm sure there will be other opportunities. We at Wake Tech also do like boot camps when students are getting ready for certifications and other things to prepare students for certifications. And the other early college partnerships that we have at our Malone and North Wake, students in those high schools also do different certifications depending on what program of study they're in and the school system does cover the food and services.
Okay, that sounds great. Yeah, I think that, thank you.
I would take on that, that we're very excited, and I spoke to Principal Stotzenberg about this, about the coordination that will occur in benefit of having this school in Morrisville so close to Research Drive Park. There are lots of opportunities for student internships to be aligned with those businesses in the park. And this curriculum that is set up just sets up perfectly for that. So there's, there's a lot of opportunity here. I want to be sure we didn't miss dotting that I and crossing that T. It's really something special for our system.
Yeah, it definitely is. I'm, I'm actually the president of Women of Cisco, RTP. So, you know, I hope that we can work together on, you know, internship programs and, and other things of that sort. I, I mean, I'm, I'm really excited. I think it's a fantastic opportunity.
I would invite Ms. Stotzenberg to share an email with you if I can spell her last name properly with confidence. I would give it to you. But you can certainly do that. But that's wonderful. Thank you for your time.
Her email is on the web and she's got business cards out front. Councilmember Skargens Johnson, followed by Councilmember Ralph, please.
Thank you. What a wonderful evening this has been. And this is just the icing on the cake. And I have wanted a high school in Morrisville since I moved here in 2004. So thank you to everyone that's been working so diligently to try to help realize that. We've had a lot of stops and starts. We've had a lot of meetings that we attended at the school board. Parents have come forward to the council. It's just been a long journey and we're finally realizing it. And we have an application that's open so students can start applying. So that is really great news. I wanted to share a little bit about my background. I am a first generation college graduate. So the value of this program is tremendous. I was dropped off on the doorstep of the college when I moved in, and I had absolutely no understanding of what was to be expected of me. To have this immersive experience is so valuable to our students in the county and our students in Morrisville. The opportunities for these degrees are really in alignment with the demand of our business community. So well done, well aligned. And like the Cisco certifications, I'm sure there could be other certifications from companies like Google or Apple or similar companies like that.
You don't need those if you have the Cisco certifications.
Oh, yeah, the fruit company, sorry. One of the areas that I am closely aligned with is health and sciences. I worked in the pharmaceutical industry for many years. My husband actually teaches at Wake Tech and he taught at the Early College of Health and Sciences. And I will tell you that he said those students are very serious and they are, they are really good students. So we expect great things from each of these students that come through the college system that's joint with Wake Tech or with the other institutions that you've partnered with. One of the questions that I have for you is if someone doesn't enter the early college in ninth grade, do they still have an opportunity in 10th or 11th if they kind of missed that early window so that they can take the courses that are needed in order to get an associate or similar college credit?
Was your, was your question premised on the fact that they are in the ninth grade of this school or that they're in a different?
Let, let's say they're in Panther Creek in ninth grade this year and they want to apply to the early college, but they won't get that full five years.
And, and I'll defer, yes is the answer, really. And I remember at some of the early ones, there were questions about whether we could be able to join classes with transfers early on and have to do with enrollment numbers, providing their, their seats. But we would provide opportunities to children to transfer from other schools and, and work with them to align with their courses.
That's fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Garmela.
Thank you, Betty. This is an excellent presentation, very well run. And my question I would start with, I'm a bit disappointed that this whole program was late by a year because my son is a sophomore and he misses his opportunity. And I would have allowed to put him here and, because I don't enjoy going to Anlo back and forth every day. But it's a good skill. Like, my question is more about the Parkside Middle and High, you know. Can you tell us a little bit more about it? Because it's, it says it opens up in 2025. We are talking about the capacity of 100 for ninth and 10th. What about the middle school and the others? So what is the basic composition of that school? So I would love to hear that.
The, the basic arrangement is this is our standard middle school. I, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. I want to say the enrollment, the cap, not cap, the core capacity is 1,200 students. So it's our typical large middle school with all of the typical program amenities. What we've done is also provide the additional space to accommodate the ninth and 10th grade class, up to 100 students, and the administration that's necessary to accompany them. They're on the same campus. So as we're going through the designs on that, and I'm sure Michelle will see it at some point, we are, we are mindful of being sure that we provide the additional parking, the additional core capacities, all of that. But there's some synergies in placing it with the middle school. Ninth grade is the last place that our students take health and living physical education courses. So there's not that clear opportunity on the Wake Tech campus, but yet all the facilities are there at the middle school. So if that's something that can be worked into their schedules, they've got those synergy opportunities. There's already a cafeteria there. There's always tran, already transportation services, parking, that's what. So what it allows us to do is sort of unweight that RT two building so that it's only college students. The most important thing that is to provide the opportunity to fully grow that school to the state limit of capacity. And it's necessary for us to pull those ninth and 10th graders out of that RT two building to get there. So typically it's 100 students per grade. Historically, we've seen a fall off on grade 13 where some students just don't want to lay graduation. My recollection is it's ranged anywhere from 25 to 50% of a class. So you may have 25 to 50 13th graders. It's unlikely to have a full 13th grade of 100 students. My memory is better than you.
Yeah. So, so then the question I have, as you said, around 1,200 is the capacity. So do, so will it be a traditional or year round? Because you have a ninth and 10th grade attached to it. So will it have two different calendars in it? And then my thing is, my kid went to Coronet, so you have that, you know, accelerated courses that you can take. Is that available in these ones so that you can take advantage of the early college program? How is the tie-up between the middle and the high here?
So the ninth and 10th graders are not part of the middle school. They are part of the Wake Early College of Information and Biotechnology. They're housed in it. It's, it's as if they were in a separate building often to themselves. So their calendar is irrespective of the middle school calendar.
So both are different calendars then? Like in the same fac, in the same building or same area?
Well, they will be on a different calendar because the early college high school is typically on a modified calendar that aligns with the community college or university. That's probably not the calendar that would be considered for the middle school. It's a standalone interview. Whether it's year round or traditional is determined by the board about a year in advance of its opening. We don't know that yet. It's like we don't know where the assignment plan is. But since it's an early college versus a middle school, it's unlikely they'll be on the exact same calendar.
Okay. And, and what about 11th and 12th? So is that, will that be in Wake Tech or will this pretty much like up to 10th and then 11th, 12th is 100% Wake Tech?
11th, 12th and 13th will be primarily located at Wake Tech. Typically, the 11th graders will have two classes that they need to take that are on their high school track and the rest are college. 12th graders usually have one course they need to take and the rest are college courses. We have not yet gotten quite to that point since we're starting with ninth and 10th graders, but it wouldn't be unusual for us to work with Wake Tech to provide a classroom in RT two where that high school course can be taken on that campus. If the principal decides it's advantageous to have that on Parkside Campus, that's a decision that can be made as the school grows. But, but they will have a course for to, to maintain their high school status while we're taking these college courses.
So, so in, in theory, it's safe to assume that if, if the 1,200 is a capacity for the school, like 200 goes to ninth and 10th, it's 1,000 students, that will be like as a regular middle school that will run, right?
No, that 1,200 capacity is purely middle school capacity. And then the, the roughly 200 capacity could be set up. And as that, and that's just in design now. So as that design advances, if we need to accommodate some additional capacity to account for those 11th and 12th graders in the event their course is taken on campus, you may see that capacity number jump to 25, to 50, to 75. They're, they're not there all day. So it's, it's a, it's a little bit of a massaging to get those numbers right. We will not do anything to short the core capacity to provide a full size middle school.
Again, thank you very much and the entire staff here, you know, it's excellent and it's good for Morrisville as a resident. Thank you.
Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Thank you. This is very exciting. Just want to thank you all for an excellent presentation. First, just a follow-up or comment that's made about the opportunities for internships. I think a lot of people never talk about this, but 10% of all the public companies in North Carolina are headquartered in Morrisville. And I think this is a huge advantage for Wake Tech RTP to leverage on models that have already been built. Tom Looney, former Wake Tech Chair and Board of Trustees Chair, a friend of mine, has worked a lot to create very innovative internships, particularly with Lenovo and others. So hopefully we can work with Mr. Looney to, to replicate those kinds of models moving forward. My question has, I just finished Henry Kissinger's book on AI, which is fascinating, called The Age of AI with Eric Schmidt. And it's very evident that, you know, artificial intelligence and machine learning are having such a profound impact on not only the jobs that exist today, but the future of work. And so my question is, I mean, the biggest challenge that the US is facing is that many of the new jobs that exist, the skills just aren't there, even within the universities. And so the challenge is how we can be flexible to adapt to the changes. So the worker shortages we often talk about are, you were talking a lot about the pandemic, but I think we all know there's a lot of worker shortages because of the lack of skills. So, you know, my question is, to what extent will this computer science program really focus in on, you know, AI in terms of just the trends in, in, in the industries, the impact on careers so that when they do go to college, you know, whether they do an internship or they can even work before they go to college, they'll be even further ahead?
I can't speak specifically about each course that's been the four different programs at Wake Tech, but what I can tell you about Wake Tech's programs in general is that each of our degree programs has an advisory committee that is made up of business members from the community. And those, those business advisory members drive the curriculum, help Wake Tech keep their curriculum current.
Anything else, sir?
One thing I would note, when you look at the four programs that are the focused areas, coming out of the pandemic and seeing how the world has changed, I think this school more than any other aligns with those that are well suited to more remote working, more flexible working than any other program that we've set up so far. So we're, we're really very excited about how RTP and the companies are going to evolve in the direction you've described, how that in turn helps inform Wake Tech and how that in turn informs our curriculum. I would love for the school system to take credit for all these curriculum choices, but since we started working with Dr. Scott and now with Scott Rawls, Wake Tech has a very different character at every one of their campuses. And our models align very well with those. And they're regionally aligned with a lot of the business opportunities. It's one of the things Wake Tech does best. And I think that's, that's obviously why you have this variety of courses and opportunities in Morrisville, where 10% of the companies are headquartered in the shadow of RTP. So if there's ever one that's, that's on the forefront of that sort of revolution, I think this one is best positioned for that.
Yeah. And as a follow-up to that, this final thing, I think that's a great way to put it. I mean, I think the collaborative partnerships that Wake Tech has forged have been critical in the success. When you look at, you know, Infosys, for example, Dr. Rawls worked tirelessly along with the team to work with them on creating jobs for their global innovation hub. I think the same kind of things can be done and, and the model's already set to, to engage with these partners with the school so that these, you know, curriculum can be changing fast. So we should actually, maybe that's how our council and our town can help us all as well, along with our chamber, is to reach out to our companies and give them an opportunity to be a part of that conversation, which I know Dr. Rawls will, will do along with your team. But, you know, thank you for that.
Dr. Rawls, he has challenged each one of his provosts that are over these different campuses. And so Keith Bouschek is the provost over the RTP campus. He has challenged each one of them to have a council of advisory members that are employers in their area. And so I know that's something each provost has said in the house.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender, followed by Mayor Porton Johnson, please.
Thank you so much for coming in today. And to all of you, thank you. I know a lot of people in our town are excited for this school. And I, I tell my son often, probably more often than he wants to hear, that we are so, so, so fortunate to live in this area where there is so many different opportunities. You know, I grew up in McDowell County over in the mountains and it is radically different. And I could have used something like this myself. I'm a first generation college graduate. But I do have a couple of questions just for clarity. Regarding the ninth and 10th graders over at Parkside Middle School, will that be a separate building or a separate floor?
Currently, it's very early designs, has a separate wing, but it has separate entrances and some opportunities for connection where it makes sense. But for the most part, they're, they're, they're separate and apart from the middle school.
Okay. And then on one of the slides, it said the timing was 2025. And I was not clear if that was the timing for when the nor, uh, ninth and 10th graders would be on that campus or the timing for when that middle school opens?
And that's a great question. And I think the answer is both. The expectation is that when that school opens, it will be open and ready to accept the ninth and 10th graders as well as to open to a new middle school. Again, much like we're starting with ninth and 10th graders, our middle school rarely starts with a full complement of students either. So it's likely to begin with sixth and seventh graders and grow into an eighth grade year. So it's planned to open in August of 25. Both should begin at that point. So when we start in August 22, we'll finish our first year in 23, 24, 25. By that point, we will have our, our first graduating class when we open in Newton. So we'll, we should be fully So we'll, we should be fully filled. And that's to say, we shouldn't suffer any ill effects of not having full capacity opportunities. As soon as we get to the point where we're ready for it, very, that next year will happen. So the, the timing, although unfortunately delayed by COVID, we really haven't missed a step.
Okay, that's great. And then my last question, um, I heard someone say, uh, with regards to the application process and the criteria of what students get in, that there's the goal of 70% first-generation, um, students. But is it, how often is that goal met?
Could you go to the microphone, please, sir? Thank you.
So if it's not, if it's not met, what we will do is we will end up filling the remaining seats with, uh, non-first gen families. Uh, how often does that happen? It depends on the particular school. Um, in this particular area, um, when you look at the applicants, um, depending on, you know, whether they're first gen or not, uh, I think transportation will also play into it. So I think it just depends on the school.
Okay. Is it ever met, any of the schools in the county?
Yes, it has been met.
Okay. All right. Yeah, 'cause, um, most of our residents are going to be college-educated, so, um, I imagine that will play some factor in it.
That's a great observation, but as Lynn mentioned, what we really want to do is fill that school up.
Right.
So we'll, we'll look and carefully consider all of the first-generation college high school applicants. And if we don't meet that 70% mark, it's open beyond that, uh, for our selection of well-qualified students to fill the seats.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Johnson, please.
So just to follow up on that, I think we all know that, um, this is a highly educated community. And there were, there were several years ago, um, even I was shocked, several years ago, the percentage of Morrisville residents that held a four-year degree or higher, that percentage was actually higher than Chapel Hill. So I'm not sure we hold that mantle anymore, but, um, we are a very highly educated, um, community. So that concerns me that, um, you know, how many of our residents will actually be able to meet that criteria. But, um, I'm happy to hear that you're, could be flexible on that 75% if you can't meet that. Um, I'm, I'm going to ask, well, first, I'm going to also thank you all for being here. We appreciate you all being here. I forget now who said it, but one of you also thanked our staff. So I want to make sure we also thank our staff for the work that they have done to this point with you all and the work that they will be doing, uh, moving forward, not only on this opportunity, but hopefully all the opportunities that are to come in the future. So thank our staff as well. And I'm going to ask a question about this ninth and 10th grade option, too. Um, so clearly, the ninth and 10th grade, at this point, you, you, you foresee, and this is my observation, you correct me if I'm wrong, you see that ninth and 10th grade staying at the medical site, middle school site for the future. That's not anything temporary, but that'll be there for the future. Do you have, the other early college programs that you have, do you also have ninth and 10th grade that, that is, um, that sits in a, another, a, a middle school today as well? Is this, uh, something else that exists out there in, in the district, or is this brand new?
On some occasions. Our women's and men's leadership academies are six through 12. So the ninth and 10th graders remain on the base campus with the middle school components and then travel to St. Augustine's University for their college courses. Our Wake STEM, uh, in alignment with N C State, is about to move into a standalone building where they will remain in their standalone building. At Burnham alone, we have a standalone building, and Wake Tech comes to us. They embed teachers in the spaces that were built for them. So they take their college courses basically on board of education facilities. Uh, so we have a variety of ways that we do business with Wake Tech, um, with our Wake Island College of Health Sciences. We started out in a Wake Tech facility over at Wake Med, and now they're predominantly located uh, more in the northern Wake Tech campus. Here, they're starting out completely on the Wake Tech, Wake Tech campus because we don't have an alternative yet. So it's not so much that they're with other middle school students so much as they're in a separate location from the balance of their school. And the reason for that is, is pretty clear. They're taking almost 100% usually of high school courses. There's a big difference in a ninth grader and a 12th and 13th grader in terms of maturity and their level of advancement and where they come for courses. So there's some benefit to having those get the right start to be prepared for the river that's to come. The fact that it's on a middle school campus, um, is, is, is important from a locational standpoint, but it's not in a middle school. They have, it, it will be a single building, but they have a completely separated wing so that they will have their own ninth and 10th grade small high school experience.
Okay, okay. All right, we'll see how this go. I, I, I will tell my, so we're talking about experiences. Um, my oldest, when she attended ninth grade, uh, Green Hope was overcrowded, and so they put the ninth grade into, um, Carpenter Elementary. Um, and, and as a parent, um, with a child going to high school, and my first going to high school, I love that idea that the ninth grade was kind of all sanctioned off on their own and had the opportunity to learn, um, high school kind of separated from, um, from the full, because there's a big difference between the ninth grader and the 12th grader. So, so, um, okay, well, thank you for that. We'll, um, and thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
I'd like to echo, um, this is all very exciting for everybody. We'd like to thank you guys for attending tonight and our staff. I want to really say that we appreciate the flexibility and innovation. Your staff and elected board members have shown to create these opportunities, and we look forward to continued collaborative partnerships to meet the educational needs of all our residents in all of Way County. So kudos to all of you for coming up with this innovative model. We look forward to partnering with you in the future, and, um, we are very excited, as are our residents. So thank you so much, and we'll, um, make sure that this gets out to our residents because December 14th is on its way, and we want those who want to attend the first high school in Morrisville to be able to. So thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you for mentioning that, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to do the same thing. You just, uh, I just need to make sure everyone knows that December 14th is the cutoff for the application period to this and early, early college high school opportunities. And we'd love to have as many applicants as we can to expose them to this exciting idea of pitch case market.
Okay, and before you go, I think there's another question, Councilmember Buddy?
Yeah, I just have one last question because I know that when everybody finds out that you all were here, they're going to ask us, so I want to have the answer. Um, what, can you speak to any plans to address overcrowding in the current, in the immediately located high schools to Morrisville? Panther Creek, Green Hope, um, Green Little Church seems to, that seems great. But can you speak to that at all?
Right. Green Little High School has some, has some roads to expand. And what I've said, anytime I've looked for land and spoken with your staff, it's a great success and what attracts people to Morrisville, businesses and residences, and it's so exciting. Um, makes my job miserably impossible to find the land necessary to support a high school. Uh, I, I, I love working with Michelle and Andrew Page and worked with Courtney Tanner before that. Uh, when we're looking for the acres we need for large high school up here, it, it simply has been put to other uses and from its own perspective, higher and better uses. So it's a bit difficult. Uh, we are planning to build a school in Apex that will open. Uh, currently, the seat shortage along the Western Corridor is about 1,950 students. Those are satisfied currently in 109 trailer units that we have in those Western Corridor high schools. It's not ideal, but it's, it's the temporary, and I realize that gets a grin. But it's, it's the flexible opportunity we have for now. That school, hopeful, will be completed and opened by 2025. And when that happens, uh, there'll be an adjustment to student assignment areas to be sure that we fully utilize those school facilities. Beyond that, it is difficult to reduce capping without, or reduce the student overcrowding without a place to put them. So we have been building high schools in the last five or six years as fast as we possibly can. And, and the growth that occurred in the Western Corridor with the development of 540 and the development of the, the Triangle Expressway and the West Wake Partners water and sewer plant has caused growth to just way outpace any opportunity we've had to develop these very large, expensive school placements as rapidly as we would love. Uh, I, I wish we had an answer. I would invite Mr. Prozess to, to give one if he's got it.
Um, I would just-
Because the challenges, I think, are, are what we all have at once.
Actually, I was just going to come to highlight, uh, Green Little High School was a school that helped in the Western Wake area to provide relief to some of the crowded high schools. Um, but as, as I echo what Betty says, um, you know, the, the rapid growth in the area, we're going to continue to do our best to try to provide quickly as possible.
Yeah, the, the secret is out. It's a good place to live. Um, Councilmember Garamilla?
No, um, I would just wanted to acknowledge Chris Hagerty, you know, um, for all the work that he does in representing us and this presentation, and it is, thanks for your leadership, uh, and working. And I'm sure Marsville is very excited with this.
Yeah, we do appreciate you and the entire staff. Thank you all very much for coming. I think that's it for tonight. Thank you very much for spending time out here. So as they're leaving, I'll, uh, our next item will be led by Caleb Alred, Planner One. He's going to introduce the Go Triangle representatives for the commuter rail project update. Caleb?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Um, I'm here to introduce, uh, Charles Latuca, the President and CEO of Go Triangle, and Liz Raskoff, the Public Engagement Supervisor at Go Triangle, to talk about the commuter rail project. Thank you. Kedipe. Glad to see a lot of you again. I was here for your transit, Ricky Cuddy.
Yeah.
I hope it's going really well. I can see transportation is very important in Morrisville. You have the train right here. So we can talk a little bit more about train. Very happy to be here too. Do we still work on, or is it? Could be a pull-up?
A train? Right here, if you pull up? Yeah.
Sure.
There's a mouse.
I see. Okay, there you go. That can be. Um, so, uh, Go Triangle, as you don't know, uh, we're the regional carrier for bus services in the region, and we've been around for about 33 years. We work very closely with O'Callaghan, O'Carroll, Chapel Hill, and Durham. Uh, we actually operate the Durham, uh, system for Durham, uh, under their direction. Uh, so we're, uh, we're looking at the regional picture most of the time. We're not working with our partners on their projects. And, uh, Go Triangle carries about only 8% of the passengers on bus in the region, but we carry about 32% of miles. So, uh, so it's a big region, uh, three counties, and, uh, requires a lot of service. And you connect everybody here and work together as a team with our regional partners to get people where they need to go. Uh, so we've been studying commuter rail for a couple of years now. And this last phase of the feasibility study that we're working on has been looking at the Durham to Clayton corridor. About 43 miles. We think we're going to carry anywhere between 7,500 and 10,000 passengers a day on our early ridership projections. Four trains in the morning, four in each direction, four trains in the evening, and four in the midday service. And, um, it's, the area growing, and I've heard a lot of, you know, our previous speakers talk about the rapid growth of the area. So we're looking at, uh, from a 20-year standpoint, so by 2040, uh, the Triangle region, including Johnston County, we're looking at, you know, over 650,000 people coming to the area over the next 20 years. So, um, I'm glad to see that you're planning for new schools, and we're going to see how we can get people around the region, too, because, uh, these 650,000 people, we're predicting my train is many as 400,000 cars with them, uh, or that's going to grow from vehicle population. So we're going to need alternatives for people to choose, uh, a transit alternative that's a good alternative, that get people where they need to go in a safe and quick fashion and reliable schedule, and that's what commuter rail really does. Uh, you have a lot of rail infrastructure in the area now. You have the track service, and you have, uh, the regional Piedmont service that EOP operates. There's about 10 passenger trains, uh, a day that operate through the North Carolina Railroad corridor, which is what you see right here. Uh, so this corridor is already built. It's only been operated by North Carolina Railroads. And it, uh, it's something that we're going to, again, uh, increase the purpose of. So it's an existing facility where we can expand the purpose of this by paying double track. Most of the North Carolina railroad is a single-tread operation. So where are we? So, uh, we talked a little bit about this already, so we're looking at stops and locations and schedules and how many tracks that we need, how many bridges need to be replaced, what the ridership is going to be. We just got done, uh, adjusting the Camp O and Durham, uh, models, transportation models, so we can predict, uh, what the capacity is going to be, how many people are going to be on the roads. Uh, we're also working with Norfolk Southern, uh, to see how many more trains do we fit in this corridor? Because Norfolk Southern operates freight on this corridor, about 60 trains a week. And so between the passenger trains that exist already and the freight trains that are in there and their schedules, uh, their study and, uh, our app, we're paying to do this. Uh, how many more trains can we put into this corridor? Will our 40-train schedule work with the trains that they have now? And right now, uh, we've had some preliminary feedback from Norfolk Southern, and it's looking pretty good. So, um, we're going to also look at how housing is impacted. Uh, 27% of the available and planned, uh, corridor housing is within a mile either side of this corridor, the whole region. So that's really good. Land use is, uh, something we're looking at, and also job creation. Where are people going to live in the next 20 years? And we are, we think if we have very successful service, we're going to, uh, densify the area around railroad. Uh, and so we'll have some reports coming out on that when this feasibility study is done. Uh, we're in the third round of public engagement. Liz Raskoff here is here to help talk about some of the public engagement efforts we had in the past and what's ongoing and what you're going to experience for the next couple of months. The study was supposed to be done, uh, in December. We were planning to have the study finished in December. Uh, we're still waiting for some work to be done by Norfolk Southern. Uh, so I think we're going to be pushing the, the study out to the end of February, perhaps into March, when we deliver the final product of the feasibility study. Uh, for everybody here to, for your council to take a look at and, uh, and debate, also for the commissioners in all the counties, uh, Johnston, Wayne, Durham, uh, to consider, and also the NPOs. Uh, so I want to talk a little bit about investment in transportation because it's so important that we just don't build a pure rail system. We need to build a system that is multimodal, multifunctional. Uh, bus rapid transit, people have heard, have heard a lot about bus rapid transit. It's a complementary investment to, uh, what we're calling the commuter rail, be like the spine to the corridor. In the bus rapid transit system that you see right now, these yellow lines next to the commuter rail blue line are already, uh, on the planning books. One is under construction in Raleigh New Bern, and, uh, this, this, these are all intended to be built uh, by their sponsors by the end of 2030. About $700 million worth of investment in bus rapid transit. They serve in high-volume corridors. Bus rapid transit corridors are generally anywhere between seven and 11 miles, the ones that are being planned right now. Uh, and they can carry a lot of people, but they don't carry them very far. Uh, but that's what commuter rail does. So, uh, the, and it may look even like, you might say, wow, that's a little bit competitive. Why does the yellow line follow the blue line so closely? Is it redundant? And it's not, because the bus rapid transit customer generally rides about 10 miles. But a commuter rail customer will travel more than 20 miles. So that's the difference between, uh, you know, and also the bus will, bus rapid transit, while it will run part of its trip exclusively, it will also run in traffic. So, uh, it's still subject to some of the debris of traffic and accidents and things like that. This next, uh, map is very similar, except you see a lot more bus rapid transit lines on it. This is what bus rapid transit, uh, program, uh, if you ask the NPOs, this is what is being thought about. Uh, it could be completed by 2045, 2050, yeah, 2045. So after 2030, we're going to add a bunch, new bus rapid transit. What I like about this, it shows a system. It shows a system that's going to serve the growth, uh, of the, of the region. It's going to serve the employment centers. It's going to function together like a real urban transit system might in a large city. Uh, you know, the challenges are always great here in Triangle, because we don't have that large- You know, the challenges are always great here in Triangle, because we don't have that large terminal. Charlotte or Austin and Houston, we have several, Kerry, you know, Durham, Raleigh, and, you know, going up to Clayton. So we're very spread out, and it's a real challenge. So we need all this investment here to create a decent system to get people around and get them out of their cars. Now, we don't have the local bus system on this map, because I don't think with all those extra lines, you would be able to see anything. But the local buses are so important to getting our, you know, to building a proper transit system for folks. So we need a lot of expansion with local bus. Durham is working on their transit plan right now. They're very focused on increasing their local bus services. I always consider this to be a three-legged stool. You have commuter rail, bus rapid transit, local bus, and then you have a system that's going to serve the region effectively, you know, with everything that's going to come, all the people that are coming, keep us a viable and attractive region to live in, because we're not going to be over congested or like DC or LA. We don't want that. There's a lot of congestion now. Just, it's like coming down here tonight. I still see, even in COVID, there's still a fair amount of congestion that we're experiencing out there on the road, especially as Johnson County, the fastest-growing county in the state, continues to expand, and that county is expected more than double by 2040 in their population. So we have a lot of challenges here where you're from, and making sure that is well-planned and the quality of life is very good. And I think there's a lot of challenges in the east. Most of these folks that are coming, whether they're going to be born here or come here over the next twenty years, are going to be living probably east of RTP, what I can see from the census records. So that's the challenge, right? How do we get folks that are going to live in Clayton, in Garner, and places like that? And where are businesses going to locate when they come? You know, they're going to take into consideration the availability of good transit. I know several of the large employers that recently located to Charlotte cited transit as one of their top three reasons for picking Charlotte as a place to go. And we want to make sure that we have the same type of capacity and the same type of multimodal system that Charlotte has that they are going to remain competitive. And we're going to grow. There's just no doubt about it. I'm from Rochester, New York. People are leaving that area. So it's great for me, and I spent the last ten years in Maryland, which is also growing, but down here, it's tough. I've been here a year and a half, and I don't think a week or a month goes by without a major announcement of a new player coming to the region or a new large building being constructed in one of our downtown areas. I know Kerry has a very large redevelopment plan underway. So there's a lot to do here. There's a lot to take into account. There's a lot of money we have to spend in order to meet these needs. But I really think we can do it, and I think this is a very necessary investment for the future. So I'm going to turn it over to Liz Raskoff right now. She's the Public Engagement.
Thank you. Glad to be here. I'm Liz Raskoff. I am the Public Engagement Supervisor at Go Triangle. And I just want to walk you all through some information about how we've been working to get information about commuter rail out to the public. So the first slide here is about a survey that we conducted in the fall of 2020. So we had actually a great success rate, especially given the fact that people were digesting a lot of important health information at that time and really inundated with a lot of material. And so we had five thousand project-related comments from over twenty-seven-hundred participants. And that survey consisted of three open-ended questions that really asked, you know, what would you see commuter rail doing through your community? What should elected leaders consider in this community process? That was our first round of engagement in the fall. From that survey and those results, what we heard was three top desires from the public regarding a service like a commuter rail. So people talked a lot about providing that reliability, right? They want to be able to count on, I can get from here to there in this set time, right? You know, for instance, I live in Durham, and it's nineteen miles, and it took me an hour to get here, right? And so what can we do for people so that that's not the case, right, in the future, right? When I looked at Google Maps, it was twenty-four minutes to an hour. So that, you can't really plan your life when that is the case. And people are also interested in mitigating congestion. So this is for a few reasons. We did some focus groups to help close demographic gaps following the survey. And what people talked about was kind of three things. One was an environmental motivation for mitigating congestion, right? They're concerned about the types of emissions that are being generated by, you know, sick, alcoholic vehicles. But then people also talked about just the stress of driving. I've heard that a lot. That's very interesting to hear, that people talked about, you know, choosing not to go places because they don't want to sit in the traffic for their stress levels. And then also, there are some younger people that are choosing not to get driver's licenses, right? So they can get an Uber or Lyft, but they are choosing not to get that license. And so there's folks that are talking about different concerns about congestion, as well as increasing connectivity in the region, right? So as Chuck was mentioning, you know, we don't live our lives at the county lines, right? We travel back and forth across the region. And so people noted the connectivity for their personal travel reasons, right, to family or to work, but also seeing that in order to be competitive with these other metropolitan regions that are growing or established, increasing that connectivity and helping to show employers that this area is a region where you can get back and forth between places. So you can't have an employee that lives, you know, out east but also works in our community. And then I would just note, we also had eighty-seven percent positive feedback sentiment in those comments. So what did we do next? We decided to build a website just for this project because people wanted more information, right? So we took all the information that's been out there about the commuter rail project since the start of the Durham Transit Plan in 2011 and the start of the Wake Transit Plan in 2016, took all that and put it in one place. We have some great interviews there with Mayor Baldwin and other folks from around the country who have built or operate commuter rail systems. So you can see interviews of people who have experience with this kind of project. And the site has had over thirty-five-thousand page views since its inception. We announced the site in April, and it was actually the same as the Apple announcement. So got a lot of conversations going. And you can see from the top five pages visited that those stations are really important, right? People want to know, where could my station be? What could it be like? What could I get to? One of the areas we identified as an opportunity was to have more of a presence in downtown Durham and to be able to have more access to directly the Durham community. So we established a office site in downtown Durham, and so we actually use that as sort of our engagement hub to get out to the public at different events. So this number is since updated, but we've had over three-hundred-and-fifty-five hours, it's now about three-hundred-and-seventy, of actual in-person engagement since last August. So this is canvassing at businesses, going door-to-door to businesses, having them to display information, doing some tabling at, this is Raleigh Station. My colleague Nathan Kemp is out there in this photo with information. And we always take the opportunity to share any of our partners' information or anything about projects that are going on currently as well, as well as attending community events. So there have been some more festivals happening recently, and so they're participating in those. We've also adapted to doing engagement virtually. So one good example is in this photo, this is a how to ride the bus session with folks at Dorcas Ministries. So through our relationship with Dorcas, they let us know that their study is right on a Raleigh, or Go Kerry bus route, but people didn't know how to ride the bus, and they didn't know if they had to pay or what they had to pay. And so we did a virtual session, basically just telling people and teaching people how to ride the bus. And from there, we used that opportunity, when we had that participation, to talk about, this is the transit you can use today, and this is what we're looking at in the future. And we'd love to keep you informed and get your input. We've also conducted virtual focus groups and, you know, webinars like the North Carolina Railroad hosted this Progress in Motion webinar series that we worked. So when we look at our touchpoints, what we call our touchpoints with the community, you can just see here the breakdown of the types of interactions we're having. So presentations like this, two different stakeholder groups, we've had community group meetings. That canvassing has been a really important part of our work this past year, as well as those in-person and tabling events. So again, this number is higher at this point. I think it's closer to over thirty businesses. But with our canvassing for businesses, we were able this past year to hire our first bilingual public engagement specialist who speaks Spanish fluently and is a native speaker. And so we had, you know, a staff person that could really go out and speak with Spanish-speaking community members. And we also wanted to make sure we were reaching black-owned businesses as well. So the focus is on canvassing black and Hispanic-owned businesses, especially at Hispanic-owned businesses. There's a place often at the front of the store that has a lot of information for the public, right? So cards of different resources and different companies that can help people with different things. So it's a great opportunity to meet people where they are, especially during the pandemic, recognizing that people need to get food, right? So a supermarket is going to be a place where someone at least is going to interact with them. We've also had, at this point, over forty-five stakeholder presentations like this one. America Council of Engineering Companies, the Triangle East Chamber of Commerce. We've been working very closely with the Clayton Chamber of Commerce and also spoke with their Association of Realtors, and then a number of groups in Durham and Wake Counties as well. Another piece we did was something I really loved. So we worked with the Durham County Public Library System. And if you work for an organization and you want to have information put out at the library, you work with them, you tell them a theme that you want to put out, and they actually look up books that are associated with that. And so they'll pick ten, twelve books that they want to put on display that are related to your topic, and then you can put your information out. So I highly recommend pursuing that option if you have things that you want to get out to the public. So we had a display in both the, like, five-to-eighteen-year-old section of the library, as well as the regular section. And I just went by it the other day, actually, and all of our brochures are gone. So it's really good that we have it out there. And people who are interested in the library asked us to extend our thirty days to sixty days. So it's been a really great success. And as soon as we launched our education campaign this summer, we had a request from the Wake County Public Library System for a thousand brochures. So really working with folks that we know are serving the community, especially people who might need somewhere to go or need help getting a job, you know, folks who might have access online to the commuter rail at the library. And then finally, we did host a webinar last week. It was a really great success. We had over six-hundred people register, and we had almost half of that actually attend. And so the format was a presentation, sort of like this. We also went through the specific station locations and gave just high-level information of what is sort of accessible by that station, what people could look forward to. And then throughout the presentation, we took questions, and we had at least ninety questions from the public. And then we had a panel at the end of our project. So we had a moderator who directed the questions to the different people on the panel, and they would address what the public had put into the chat. We've saved it all, and the webinar is now available for viewing on our Ready for LNC website. And I'm happy to distribute the link as well. So that is all the engagement we've been doing so far. Again, in this current phase of study, commuter rail information has been included in any engagement we've done in complete counties since 2016. It's also been in the Durham Transit Plan since 2011. We are getting closer to sort of the next steps here. And so when the feasibility study is complete, as Chuck mentioned, it would be sort of delivered to the county sponsors, funding partners, who will decide if the costs and benefits are acceptable. So the question is really, is this a politically, financially, you know, technically feasible project? And then it would advance to, if so, if the vote is yes, then it advanced to application for federal funding. So a project of this size will look for funding of up to fifty percent from the federal government. And if that is the decision of the partners, then, and it's successful for a bit, then the construction could start as early as 2025, with service potentially as early as 2030, of course, to be determined. But that's what we have to talk about today, and happy to answer any questions. So thanks so much for having us.
Great. Thank you so much. This is great presentation, and I was able to attend that workshop on the eighteenth, and it was regarding station locations. So I want to make sure that Marswell was still there, and I was very glad to see that it is such an integral part of the overall plan as it's closest to the airport and the stuff like that. So really good stuff. Councilmember Garamilla?
Yeah. With this slide, I wanted to ask, with the new infrastructure bill that just passed, I know Charlotte is saying that they are getting money from the infrastructure bill to do their transit. Is any of that money geared for these kind of projects?
So we're a little early to have a project, this project actually put in for APD as a recipient. But this is, there's a couple of programs right now, and FDA is developing guidelines for money that's going to be spent over the next five years. There's about seventy-seven percent more money for transit over the next five years than there has been the last five years. So we're very hopeful that we'll get some of that. To take on some early, you know, perhaps take on some projects a little bit early that where we can, you know, acquire property to support this larger project. The project could be in the $2 billion range, so there's some early opportunities to reduce the cost by getting some grants. Also, there are lots of grants for Amtrak and the Federal Railroad Administration for freight, for expansion of capacity and safety. So, and I know NC DOT is very involved in applying for money to expand some of the rail capacity where we want to build commuter rail. And if they're successful, that'll also help the project get along. So recently, they applied for a $140 million grant from US DOT last spring. They didn't get it, but there may be another opportunity for them to go again, and that would take some of the cost off of our project. To allow that other track laid in there. So there's a lot to be determined. There's still the Build Back Better bill. There's a lot of environmental-type transit improvements in that bill that could also benefit this project.
And then you had mentioned we will be getting close to twelve times, like commuter trains, right? Like four in the morning, four afternoon, and four in the evening, like total of twelve times.
It'll be eight, eight, four in each, and, excuse me, it'll be eight and eight, and the four in the afternoon.
Okay, eight and eight. Okay. So you're aware of how Marswell is, depending on those train tracks, you know, closures. I take my kid every day morning, and I try to beat the Amtrak. By a minute, I always miss it, because six forty-five, the, you know, gates close. My worry is DOT is still, you know, many of the projects of DOT have been pushed back, you know, for having the, you know, overbridge or, you know, those kind of things. And Marswell pretty much is divided by the train track between, you know, fifty-four. How can, for this project to be successful, you should, you need to have a good, you know, transportation that doesn't get affected by the people who want to commute by regular, you know, vehicles. Is there any coordination between DOT to ensure those projects are getting quickly done so that the fruit of this, you know, eight and eight, sixteen, twenty commuter trains, which are going back and forth with the gates getting closed, will become an issue?
Well, I know DOT has two great separation projects that they want to build. I'm not exactly sure if they're in Morrisville or somewhere else, but I know that's a goal of theirs. And they're also looking at other great separations for when they do the S-line improvements. But when we, so there will be impacts. If you have more trains, the gates come down more often. So, but we're going to have some answers for you and the rest of the driving public on what those impacts will be with the feasibility studies.
And then the other one, like you had a map, if you can go back to previous slides? The one with Garner? Yeah, this one. Is there a reason why the bus rapid transit almost runs parallel to the commuter rail? Because that's kind of countering. almost runs parallel to the commuter rail? Because that's kind of countering to you do, right? You want to get more people from, like, I like the way Clayton has done. So it's pulling people up parallely to the commuter train, but the rest of the places is all runs in parallel, and there's no connection to RDU. And I see Morrisville has two cones, like, you know, two circles. Are we getting two stations there? Because I see one before Wake Tech, and then one says Morrisville. So trying to understand, what does it mean?
So I think there's two potential locations here in Morrisville. The one in Morrisville, and there'll be ultimately one in RPT.
Okay.
So, but again, you know, the VRT customer is not a commuter rail customer. The VRT customer is generally traveling ten, twelve miles or less. Commuter rail customers can drive twenty miles or more. So while the VRT and commuter rail will meet up, I think that, you know, there's not going to be a heck of a lot of transfer between the two systems. I hope there, I hope there is, we're still modeling that. But again, if, you know, this is for the Clayton, Raleigh, Clayton, Durham folks, and the bus rapid transit, while it is a, one that's being studied from Garner and Clayton, for instance, will run in traffic. So that will really be more of a get express plus. And then it won't get any exclusive type of treatment or signal treatment until after Garner. So the bus will still be suffering from the congestion in traffic in many areas, but it will be a faster ride. It's just a shorter trip by passenger, you know. And I think what's going to happen here is people who do want to, you know, buy a very new house, new housing stock, and where taxes may be, you know, a little bit more attractive, but they work in Durham, they might want to live in Johnson County, but they wouldn't unless there was a transit alternative, because driving is very difficult in that distance.
That makes sense. So there's no connection to RDU?
So RDU, you know, By Road is about three miles from the closest proposed station. We are going to work very closely with the airport to make a connection from the station, whether it be a fifteen-minute shuttle or something like that. Ultimately, I hope that we will have some type of fixed guideway of transportation from our station into this terminal. We're only in the North Carolina Railroad Corridor, you know, so we would have to take, in order to get to RDU, we have to create a whole new right-of-way to get the train up there.
Not the train. I'm like, the reason I was asking is, like, if I'm a student to pull from Chapel Hill to go to RDU or NC State, you know, I think you should work with RDU to push that, because they have their shuttle service that they can connect instead of you providing everything. It's
And we have a lot of buses too. So we're going to, we're going to get people to RDU. That is, RDU is such an important transportation function for the region. We're not going to ignore RDU. We do talk to them about this project, and they are a partner with us in getting people around.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Rao, please.
Yeah, just a follow-up comment on, you know, whether we could get some of this federal money to, you know, Wake County. I mean, the numbers are really, I mean, sixty-six billion in rail funding, eighty-nine, you know, billion in transit when you add it all together. But I just hope that we can figure out a way to work with the state and the county, whether the state and the county could really work towards getting some of that funding at the local level. Because, you know, that's my concern, is that these are really ambitious plans, and I really commend the president for getting this bill signed. But, you know, it's like, if there's any way we could get some of that funny money, even later in the project, to accelerate this, that would be great. So I don't know what we can do to advocate for that. Just, you know.
I will be coming to you with hilarious support when we, to work with NC DOT. NC DOT, I think, has really solid plans for the corridor, along with North Carolina Railroad. And North Carolina Railroad is a partner with us in this project. It will be laying the tracks on their dirt, so to speak. And so they're a very important partner, and they do have a lot of plans to improve bridges. And when they do that, they're going to lay that second track in there, that they know they're going to need in the future. And I know NC DOT has a proposal for about fourteen miles of new traffic in corridor two, which will also help us. We just need, we need two tracks. If it's a single-track corridor, we need two to run effectively through the corridor along with the fifteen train traffic. And that's part of the cost that we're estimating in our study. When we do go for application to federal process, it'll be for the whole project. So we're hoping that if this is turned out to be a two-billion-dollar project, the feds will come in with a billion dollars. They have money, it's a new starts project, process, and they do have money available for projects like this.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Mayor Pretem Johnson, please.
Yeah, I just, a quick question. I was on the webinar last week, last Thursday, and y'all did a fabulous job. And I can see the webinar is out there now. So it's great for folks who want to watch, and of course, could fast-forward to their favorite portion where their, their, the rail station is that they're most interested in. But the project sheets you shared on that webinar are really nice. We, and I tried to look real quick just now. Are those available out on the website as well? I can't find them.
So they aren't on the website yet. We had some updates to them from the partners. So we work directly with each of the transit planning staff, each of the municipalities along the corridor. So following the webinar, they did have some feedback. And so we're working on getting those updated and getting up on the highs on the staff level to make sure everyone's comfortable with them going out to the public. And then as soon as they're ready, we'll be up.
Okay, perfect. Because they're, they're really good, by the way. And even if you, I just tried to blow it up a little bit. You can, you can look at the, at the recorded webinar, but it'd be nice to be able to actually put your hands on the actual project sheet, so.
Yep. And in the meantime, you can go to the proposed station page on the website, and if you hover over the Morrisville station, it gives you kind of a condensed version. So it'll say within half a mile, you could get to here, here, here. These are some highlights. It's a much more condensed version. But I can also make sure that Caleb has the direct link to the station sheets when they become available.
Good. And you're right. I hovered over those. That information is great, too. But that, those project sheets with the map are really, a visual is just great to have. So, so thank you for doing that. I'll look, look forward to seeing that then.
Can you give us the URL again to, could you?
Yep. It's readyforrailnc.com. And I'll make sure that Caleb has, you know, a set of links that he distributes to you all.
Okay. And the next time you have a survey, make sure you have Morrisville as an option? You're good. During the webinar, it was a survey, and I wanted so, I didn't choose anything, because I thought Morrisville wasn't, and I get it, you can only have so many options. I get it, but.
Yeah. During the webinar, we did a poll and asked people what stations they would frequent. And unfortunately, Zoom only lets you use ten options, because we have fifteen stations. So, but yes, we look forward to partnering with you all. I know, Mayor Colley, you are an incredible transit advocate. So anything that you all have in terms of ideas of how to talk about the community, your community constituents, any folks that maybe we might be missing, anyone else who needs a presentation like this, any opportunities to be out in the community, feel free to let us know, and we'll find you there.
Yeah, I think we've all been really happy to try to amplify your messaging. You're using social media so well to reach out to people, and we amplify that. Our staff has been retweeting and doing things like that. And we're no stranger to collaborative partnerships. We have the new train trestle over our Greenway. We worked with DOT with railroad to do that. So with all your assistance, we're looking forward to making lots of really good things happen for multimodal here in Morrisville in the region. So thank you very much for visiting us, and keep us in mind for future focus groups and things like that. And we'd love to participate.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. And of course, on the website, there's also a page to request the presentation. So if you have a business group or any other group, if we sign up that way too, or this call, we do come out.
We have our president of our Chamber of Commerce right here in the audience, so that might be an option, and our rotary and things like that. So we look forward to seeing you in town again. Take care.
Thank you.
So we generally take a break right around eight o'clock. So even though it's not quite scheduled yet, we're going to go ahead and take a break and reconvene at eight twelve. So see you back in about ten minutes. We are coming back into session. We are now at item eight F, and Caleb Elred will now share a smart shuttle update.
We have a running on-demand cafe service, serving fifteen locations around the Morrisville area. Service seven days a week, Monday through Friday, seven to nine, Saturday, eight to eight, and Sunday, eight to seven. This is our Morrisville Smart Shuttle node map, showing our fifteen locations around town. If you happen to take a look at this map, you'll notice that we have our transfer connections with our neighbors at GoCarry and GoTriangle, which nodes those are associated with in our map. So diving into the data and the statistics for the first month, we had four hundred and seventy-four accounts that were created, thirty-three completed rides per day on average. Our average trip duration was eleven point four minutes, and that's time spent on the shuttle. And then our average pickup wait time was thirteen minutes, and that's, you know, if you book a ride and you wait for the shuttle, that's the average wait time for that shuttle. This is just a chart showing our ridership per day and our trend line. So as you can see, it's consistent. And then it kind of spikes at the end of the month, which is, that's awesome. That's what we're looking for. In a further breakdown, that ridership by day of the week, we find that our ridership through the week stays consistent and dips a little bit on Sunday. And then our completed rides per hour throughout the day, it peaks between four and six p.m., which happens to coincide when our second shuttle is in service Monday through Friday. So that's, that's great news that we have that capacity for those folks at that time. And then diving down to the data as it pertains to each node, we have two kind of data points to go over. Individual riders or unique riders, they're basically, you know, each individual that uses the node. So for example, me as Caleb, I might book a ride to go to lunch three days a week, but it's only going to count me in the statistic one time, because I'm one individual rider. So for this one, our by node, our top three nodes for unique riders are Park West Village Two, Morrisville Carpenter, and Park West Village One. And then our bottom three nodes by unique ridership is Perimeter Park North, Perimeter Park South, and CFCC North. And the cool statistic here that I'm excited to share with you all is that our total ride, unique riders, so the total individuals that use our service through the month of October, is seven hundred and sixty-eight, which is impressive. Our second statistic we're going over in terms of node-specific data is our ridership or rides completed. So for example, that would be, you know, Caleb books a ride three days a week to go to lunch. Those three rides would be counted in this statistic, despite the fact that I'm an individual. So our top three nodes by ridership, Morrisville Carpenter node, Park West Village Two, and Kits Creek. Our bottom three nodes are Perimeter Park North, Perimeter Park South, and CFCC North. And our average ridership per node is a hundred and forty-eight rides per node. So a hundred and forty-eight trips on average through the month of October for each node. And just that I have a visual of that ridership data per node. So this, this map has both of those statistics on it. The dot size indicates the rider volume, the ridership. So the larger the dot, the more the ridership. And that's where we have our largest dots, so Park West Village Two, Morrisville Carpenter, and I think it was Kits Creek was our, was our third one. And then our unique riders are indicated in how dark the colored dot is. So the darker the color, the more unique riders, the more individuals that are using that node. And again, Park West Village Two, Morrisville Carpenter, and Morrisville, or Park West Village One. So that data, that numeric data isn't the only data we've been collecting from folks. We've also been collecting feedback that we're compiling and helping us to determine changes to the system. So the types of feedback we've been collecting, emails to the Morrisville Smart Shuttle email or my email, verbal correspondence, you know, when we're talking to folks in our community, and then our Engage Morrisville platform, we've been taking comments in that way, too. What we do is we compile it all in spreadsheets so that we can kind of visualize what the trends are and help that to, help to determine what folks want to see with the service. So future node locations are things we're looking at, service issues or the ways that we can, we can make the service better for folks. Those are things that we're, we're looking at with this technical impact. We also are going to be sending out a demographic survey. It says it's sent out in November. We are working with our partners at VIA to get that on the app right now, and that should be out shortly. So feel free to take that survey whenever everybody gets that. That survey's sent by email. It'll be put in a push notification on your phone and also through the app directly. And this, this survey is really, what we're looking for is to understand who our users are and why they're using, why they are using or want to use the Morrisville Smart Shuttle. That's kind of what we're looking for with this particular survey. And then we have a future survey we're planning out in 2022. Once folks have gotten a chance, they're comfortable with the shuttle service and they've been able to ride it, that's when we want to know what your experience has been on the shuttle, and how can we make changes that, that will make positive impact. We also get feedback in-app. So every time you book a ride and you complete a ride, it gives you the ability to rank, rate your trip, one to five, one being on the low end, then probably on the high end. Our average rating to date is, our third of the month of October is four point nine. So speaking of planning out into the future, we, you know, when we talked back in late September about the launch of service, we did talk about a node on the south side of Morrisville Parkway and the eastbound lane. So we're still coordinating with our, with our partners on getting that node located and finalized. We've walked the area that, if you can remember, we kind of identified the entire southbound lane, or sorry, eastbound lane on the south side of Morrisville Parkway. And this is our general node location that we, that we've identified. But that has not been finalized in that specific location, and we'll make sure to update you when that has been finalized. And with that, I'll take any questions to all that.
Recognize Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah. Thank you for this information. It is very interesting, and it's good to see that people are using the service. As far as future nodes, I see you got the one there that would be close to the fitness center. I've heard, I've gotten a lot of feedback from people about wanting a node somewhere along Church Street, that we don't have anything on the, the north segment of Church Street or the south segment of Church Street. And, you know, we, especially along the south side, we have a lot of those townhome communities that are growing. And, you know, and then on the north side, around Shiloh Baptist Church, we have, and a little bit south of there, we have townhome communities as well, and an older population through there. So, I mean, has there been talk about putting a node somewhere along Church Street?
I believe there, in the, in the public transit study, I think there is a note identified in that on Church Street. So over time, we'll be, you know, looking back toward that policy document to locate our nodes. What I would say, and I've taken this feedback, I'll certainly add it to our comments. But in the meantime, specifically for that node that you're referring to, along the south side of Church Street, the library node is probably a great resource for those folks you're talking to, because they can walk over, you know, sometimes I go, I'm walking at lunch on Jeremiah Street. It would be a great way to cut through to get to that node. But that is great feedback. We certainly appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Skogness Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robady, please.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you, um, great presentation, wonderful to see the utilization, obviously we have an unmet need and as people become more familiar, I expect to see an even better, um, statistic next month, so that'd be great. With that, I also have been receiving feedback from various, um, residents and business members, and one of the main, um, concerns is about our senior population. We do have a node that, um, stops at the Senior Community Center, which is fantastic, but some of the other nodes are not as, um, accessible and, um, some of the nodes don't have benches, so standing for thirteen minutes is okay for an able-bodied, healthy person, but if somebody has, um, the need to sit, uh, they don't always, not every node has a bench. Um, an example I was aware of recently is there's no bench at the library stop, and I know it's a difficult location because there is not flat ground, there's a grade and there's several other factors, but to look at having some seating at each of the nodes might help with, um, accessibility for, um, the riders. Also, we have, um, no specific stop for M A F C, and that's another accessibility issue. If you put it out in the location that you just highlighted in the presentation, there's still quite a distance to get into M A F C up to the front door, and depending on people's mobility and the fact that it can be over a hundred degrees at times, that really is a, um, barrier to, um, accessing that facility for people that are taking the, but, the, um, shuttle system. So just, these are messages that I'm sharing with you from, um, some of the residents, but overall, um, I've heard great things, people send me pictures when they're riding the shuttle and, um, very excited, so, um, just trying to make it even better for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those comments, uh, and for your feedback, we'll definitely keep that in mind when we're collaborating with our partners.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah, I used the shuttle when my car was in the shop, and I have to tell you that the experience was very good, seamless in fact. Um, so, I, I like everyone else, have been talking to people that are and aren't using the shuttle. Um, Councilmember Scroggins Johnson's point about M A F C was well-taken, and people wondered why we didn't have a node there. Also, um, there are, there's a big retirement community going up, um, right on the corner of-
McCrimmon and-
McCrimmon, thank you, McCrimmon and, uh, Town Hall Drive, and I think that we should consider a node over there too. Maybe, yeah, and, but, you know, but as Councilmember Scroggins Johnson said, the, you know, you can, I understand your point about cutting through Church Street, you could cut through Church Street, I could cut through Church Street, you know, but the, I feel like the people that we're trying to reach with the shuttle, I think it's, I mean, I'd like to see some demographic information there, like are we mainly reaching senior citizens? If so, you know, there are considerations that we have to take into account when we're planning the notes, and so some demographic information would be really helpful.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, thank you for your comments, um, I've got them written down for us to share. Uh, and in terms of demographics, that, that is, uh, our intent with our, for surveys, so I'm, I'm really excited for that to come out and to be able to share what, what we found with you all, because of course we have the same questions.
Yeah, and it would be great if there was a, um, if it was, like, I, this is the easiest way that I could think of to give feedback that would contribute to where the node should be placed, but if you, um, if you have an interactive map and, you know, somebody's riding the shuttle and you ask them what their destination is, you know, so they're riding to the library but their destination is Town Hall, you know, they're riding to Cedar Fork but their destination is someplace that's not Cedar Fork, I don't know, but, you know, like are they riding to school, do we need a node there, you know, that kind of stuff, if you could just tap a map and say where you're trying to go, that would be some good information also.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. Also, we, uh, explored that, uh-
I use a lot of apps.
Councilmember Garamella, followed by Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
Thanks Caleb for this, uh, presentation, um, my question is, yeah, we are collecting data of how many people have used, but do you see a pattern if people are using for work or a regular kind of a team instead of just a joyride? You know, because the whole idea, um, I want to see is people use less cars, you know, doing from point A to point B, and if the same person is using it at least five days a week or at least three days a week, then it helps us to say, yes, they're doing a certain purpose, they're going every day, it's kind of the work, or not just, you know, I just take the app and go once, I'll be unique, but I wanted to see if there's any pattern that can be established over a period of months.
Yeah, absolutely, so I'll, I'll say for starters, um, if we go back to our, um, our node data map, um, that the fact that Park West Village is so well represented, um, to me indicates that, um, folks are probably going there for leisure, um, for leisure activities. Uh, in addition, we, we find that our, um, our ridership throughout the week is consistent, um, you know, within reason, um, so I, I would say, uh, probably a mix of both, uh, it's probably not cut and dried whether or not it's, uh, commuters or for leisure activity, um, but I, I think that that's a great point that you make, um, you'll find that when you open our survey that we're, um, getting published soon, that one of our questions is actually asking you, for what reason would you be interested in riding the Smart Shuttle? Um, so because that survey goes out, everyone who's downloaded the app, you may or may not have used the shuttle yet, but if you were to use the shuttle, what, what would your, your reason be? Um, so I, I think that's kind of where we're trying to, to hit on that and then, um, combine that with the data that we're gathering, um, like we've, we've shared with you tonight, uh, to try to figure out what those-
So, so the survey is more of a survey, right? They can say anything, but, but, uh, are you not looking, okay, like for person A every day, you know, asks for a ride from Brackenridge and he goes to Park West? It could be, he works there or, you know, doing that, so unique rider going from point A to point B on a regular basis, that you can easily pull it from our data, right?
So that is something, um, so I guess the long and the short of, yes, yes, we can pull that data, um, for, for personal privacy reasons, uh, we don't single out one point, we compile trends of the data, um, amongst, uh, plethora of users and rides, uh, and ridership data, um, and I would say over time, hopefully we'll find more trends in terms, not necessarily in terms of, um, you know, where an individual is going, but maybe when, what time of day they're going, maybe indicates when they're going to work and-
Yeah, it's, it's not going into an individual, of course, say, it is like, every day this guy goes from point A to point B, so he's a regular, you know, commuter, that's all I'm looking, you know, and not like a joyride, like on Monday he will go and Tuesday he may go to other places.
Oh, I see. Yeah, absolutely, we can certainly look at that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Johnson, followed by Councilmember Row, please.
So Caleb, when I, when I first looked at your slides, I did get excited, I thought this was good, but I had nothing to base it on, so that you think these are good numbers makes me really excited, I'm, I'm happy to see this and hopefully this will grow now over time. One month is, um, clearly not enough to, not enough data, so, um, looking forward to getting some updates moving forward too, so thank you for this. Um, just two, two things I'm going to add, um, one, location that I've been, um, asked about is the Quail Fields Court in Morrisville Parkway, which is near where the Islamic Center of Morrisville is, um, it's also in the vicinity of the Triangle Rock Club, um, so the Triangle Rock Club, they, I haven't, nobody asked for a, 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 a node there, but it's in the same kind of vicinity, so that might be for future consideration, so I just want to put that out there for Quail, Quail Fields Court and Morrisville Parkway. And then I too want to talk a little bit about the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center, um, you know, I live right here, so I drive this, especially this portion of Morrisville Parkway a lot, and I understand, um, the curves that are there, so I know you need to balance where, uh, a shuttle can safely stop in those curves, um, and, and yet, um, making it convenient for the end user, for the customer, so, um, the only thing I, I would say, um, good luck picking the, the safest location because clearly that, that needs to be the priority, but, um, the entrance to the Aquatics and Fitness Center itself, the only sidewalk goes along the drive entrance, there is no other sidewalk to get up into the, um, into the property, and, you know, when we talk about hindsight, maybe in hindsight we should have added another sidewalk into the property somewhere, and, and maybe in the future we'll be able to do that, but, um, for those that are going to use this stop wherever it is to get the aquatics and, to the Aquatics and Fitness Center, the actual sidewalk and how to get to the facility needs to kind of play into that, so, um, so thank you for looking at that area because I think that's important to make it, um, convenient for our members at the Aquatics and Fitness Center to also use the shuttle. I think you would see that ridership too, or we all would see that, so thank you, thank you for all you're doing with this, this is an exciting project.
I would agree, and thank you for your comments.
Councilmember Row?
Yeah, the data's been very helpful, I'm getting feedback, a lot of feedback about the Church Street nodes, so definitely encourage Councilmember Fender on that, um, and, um, the other thing is, I was delighted to be running the Shuttle Greenway, uh, last week and saw a bunch of people that I knew getting on the shuttle to go to Park West, and that was, it was like, like seven or eight people all going to Firebird, so that was great to see, and I think that, um, and I'm delighted to see our sixteen-year-old son use it a lot, him and his friends, and they also made a request about, because they want to go work out, sometimes they're getting their learner's permits because they're all behind a year because of COVID for driving, and, uh, they go, they, they like it closer to the M A F C so they can go work out and come back, but it's nice to see these kids use transit and be so independent, I'm very proud of these kids, uh, to be able to use the app and get on the bus, come back, it's quite delightful to see, so hopefully we can see more of that for these kids that, you know, don't want to drive or don't want to drive as much, so, uh, it's been, I, I just hope we can continue to get this kind of feedback, and this has been one of the best things that we've done, uh, hands down, so thank you.
Yeah, excellent, thank you so much for your comment.
Yeah, the community is obviously embracing this new, new bo, new mobility option, so thank you very much for being innovative and to the whole staff and getting it going. Um, I'd like to recognize Playing Director Stiegel.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Um, just want to echo the comment that the shuttle is performing well, it's performing better than I think we initially anticipated after only being online for a month, but we're not just excited about it, we're hearing a lot from our regional partners, from Campo, from GoTriangle, from GoCarry, Wake County, everyone is asking us about the system, um, Caleb is presenting at a T-PAC meeting as well, but there's a lot of excitement and a lot of interest in this program from our regional partners, and he was even just invited, um, by, uh, VIA to go speak at a national conference about, um, the system that's going to be held in Franklin Street in Charlotte, so, um, we're really hearing great things and a lot of enthusiasm from people outside of Morrisville as well.
Yeah, we're getting shout-outs to Campo and stuff like that about the innovation that's happening in Morrisville, so we really appreciate that, staff really took the lead on this. Um, Councilmember Robati?
Uh, yeah, I just had one more question, uh, what Mayor Protem said about the M A F C reminded me, is there any reason why the shuttle couldn't just go into the parking lot and drop off at the door, or is that just not feasible for some reason?
That's, it's, it's funny you mention that, we, we, so after putting together these slides, uh, GoCarry was actually able to just do a test run through the, the area outline and the M A F C site, uh, M A F C site, um, and so it's, it's kind of all up for consideration at this point, but we'll certainly make note, um, if it's, if it's your, your preference as a collective, if that would be, um, the location, we can certainly express that to our workers.
Yeah, it's the front door of the senior center, for example, our initial ride took us there, so whatever we can do to make it easy, but we know that there's a limit and we can't meet everybody, and, uh, there's an expectation that you should be able to walk a quarter or a half mile to get to a spot, because there's no way to have spots everywhere, um, so we know that you're doing your best with limited capacity, so thank you very much. I'm not seeing any other questions, so thank you very much, we're looking forward to your next update, when might that be?
Um, I think we would, I'll have to talk to administration to-
Okay.
-figure that out, but I do look forward to giving you the next one.
Wonderful, this is what, this was a really good one, very exciting, thank you.
Great, thank you all.
Okay, Randy M. Little, our Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Director, will make our final presentation of the evening.
Uh, Mayor, Council, uh, good evening again, I'm Randy Little, Parks Recreation Director, and, uh, one of the things that I would actually say, we've heard a lot about Wake Tech tonight, so this is just one of those, uh, add-ons to some good things that's actually going on in the area, have, uh, Brian Raven, athletic supervisor, with me to, um, go over his presentation, so as I try to-
I'll try.
So, um, esports, uh, most people ask, you know, what that is, uh, language terms, it's, in, in, in my generation, is video games, but, but the good thing about esports now is, it's actually something that's being replicated, you know, not only privately but also publicly, and I'll, I'll get into that, uh, as I go through the presentation. Um- So, so again, what is esports? It's, it's really electronic sports, and, and as I mentioned, it's actually, uh, video gaming, and that could be whether it's individual or multiplayer, um, you know, now, you know, they have games and clinics and tournaments where, you know, um, younger individuals can potentially win a lot of money, so it's highly competitive, not only from a recreational standpoint, but, um, from a, actually from a, um, a job standpoint too as well, you know, a lot of people, we know, you see kids, not only kids but adults, you know, in, you know, immersed in these games, but, you know, it's a lot of strategy, uh, to this, and, like it mentions, competitions have actually taken off, so, uh, with that, you know, um, they're actually using this as an opportunity to, um, uh, create this as a job, so, um, back, back in twenty-ten, you know, video games have been around for a long time, you know, um, you know, they had, you know, consoles and those things, but like now esports has really taken off, and one of the things that's unique about esports is, it's actually, um, moving into not only as, as you can see, you know, the youth but adult too as well, um, and it's actually one of the most, uh, one of the undeserved, uh, spaces right now is Parks and Recreation, uh, one of the things that we had to do, you know, with the pandemic is find a new way to offer a variety of different services, and virtual gaming has actually taken off, I know Brian has mentioned to be, um, you know, with our state athletic conference, that video gaming is actually a part of that, um, athletic, uh, component too as well, so it's not just, you know, if you see, see someone sitting at the desk, uh, sitting at a PC or gaming, they're thinking about, and they're, and they're playing games, it might be for another intended purpose, it could be financial, it could be a part of a league, it could be a part of a team, because, you know, gaming has its own community too as well, and they do socialize and, and they're interactive, you know, on those things right there, so, um, as, as we get, you know, uh, through this presentation, you know, I'll, I'll explain it more. The, the, the why behind it now is that it does touch a vast, uh, audience, you know, again, youth as, and, and adults as a part of, you know, the, the master plan and, you know, this, actually, uh, we have a unique, a situation here, partner with Wake Tech to offer this, this service, uh, it's very, very diverse, it's unique, um, and it does address our authority index rating too from our master plan, so we're trying to connect the services that we provide back to, you know, those documents as well, and as you can tell, uh, in the initial, um, slide, that we are partnering with Ten, Wake Tech, uh, with that, you know, with the community college, and, uh, the, the commitment that they've shown us, it kind of marriage, we do want to offer unique, you know, uh, opportunities, and esports is an opportunity for us to actually partner with them, uh, right now, to offer this, uh, node, this, this, this program. So as, as I mentioned, uh, location, uh, we're in the process of, of hammering down what our, what this agreement is, um, you know, uh, through the end of the fiscal year- agreement is, you know, through the end of the fiscal year. They have proposed a couple of dates for us and as well as some times. But we definitely want to actually get that concrete. Our proposed launch date is the first of the year. I know there's been some kind of some stallment as far as getting, you know, chips and everything, as far as those kind of things, with PCs. So it's been slowed on later. But our goal is to get started, you know, early in part of '22. And so we can kind of evaluate that to the end of the fiscal year. Now, you know, we'll be responsible for registration. We'll be responsible for providing staff, as well as delivering programming jobs too as well. So the space that they gave is very, very, it's actually cool. You know, I think the kids are actually going to love it. And the one thing that I, Brian and I talked about initially when we went on to visit it, it's actually going to be kids onto a college campus, mostly like the high school. So the more and more we can get kids introduced, you know, on the college campus, it may kind of open some eyes about doing some things. So and I think by the high school being there, this is a potential possibility for them to partner with us too as well. So that's, that was actually good news to hear. So when it's not in use, of course, Wake Tech will be using that. So, you know, that's, that equipment there, I think they're going to provide us with 16 PCs. And I'll get to that a little later. But it's going to be definitely unique and pretty cool. As you can see, we have two different tiers as far as what potential programming would look like. We're still in the stage of development. But we propose this to be a year-round programming, you know, for, for youth and adults. One of the opportunities we can actually use is go through a third party. And what they would do, they would actually set up the leagues and facilitate online gameplay. The athletic staff would be overseeing that and communicating with that. So they do have, you know, those options available for, you know, start-up departments and individuals. And the goal is, is we are trying to create an ease assessment and see exactly what that need is as we kind of move forward. And, you know, as, you know, we're going through our initial season, you know, using that data to see how we can actually improve gaming, you know, whether the kids like certain games, those kind of things. So we'll be actually using that data to kind of formulate our gameplay moving forward. The next tier of the programming is, would be athletics, division staff set it up. We would, we would not use a third party. They would actually create the leagues, as well as facilitate, you know, gameplay development. You know, as we was talking, you know, in a meeting, I had realized that, you know, they would actually have clinics and camps for these type things, where they actually draw the board and they develop strategies, which is pretty cool. So with that, tier two allows, you know, our department to have more engaged, I guess, opportunities with, with the groups. So it's not specifically online. They'll be able to go, come into the space and so on and so forth. So as we kind of look at which one that we'll offer, you know, those are the two options that we have available at this present moment. And one of the opportunities is open gameplay. We just invite, you know, and have individuals come in and register. And with that, you know, it's open gameplay. They can choose a game. They can actually choose the slots, choose the time. So and that is to help, you know, start to initiate, you know, what it is that we're attempting to offer. You know, we open up gameplay, open play in the beginning, but also move into competition as well as leagues. And right now, as I mentioned previously, you know, we'll be there, propose to be there Mondays and Wednesdays from 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. So we have six hours a week. They are definitely open to additional hours, including Saturdays. But at Wake Tech, so they want to see exactly how this works out in the beginning. And then we can further discuss as we kind of move forward for additional time slots and those things. And again, the location is Wake Tech, R T P campus. They would have a gaming lounge with bar stools and group seating, as well as tables and those things, as you can tell. And the good thing about it is, is that a room will be set up for gaming. It's going to be, you know, where they can actually sit in there, their little quads and pods and everything, and actually start to, and actually compete against each other that's in the room. So it's actually going to be pretty cool. As well as, you know, we'll still consider, you know, what the COVID protocols is as well. So we want to make sure we keep everybody safe through, not only town, but through Wake Tech and health, as soon as, health and human services as well. So this is what it could potentially look like. These are just snapshots. You know, most, most programs are actually just in a community center, you know, with a screen. But this is like top of the line, where you have your own gaming system. You have chairs. You have boards where you can actually devise strategies and those kind of things. So it's really built for gaming. So we would definitely appreciate if we have this opportunity to partner with Tech, to offer this to our residents. Financial impact of the budget. The department intends for esports to be done at cost recovery, you know, over time. So we'll be monitoring that. Wake Tech has provided all the equipment, tables, chairs, those kind of things. We'll have to probably purchase some games. But what we're also trying to do is extend that beyond Wake Tech and operate, you know, have some portable gaming opportunities too as well. So as well as finding the right way to actually market to the right group. So that's where our intent is from a staffing From a revenue standpoint, as I mentioned, you definitely want to practice, price this appropriately. So, you know, based, from the beginning, you know, I think the schedule has changed. So we'll have to take a look at that. I get, what we're attempting to do is have a flat fee from the beginning, assess that as we move forward, as well as develop some different options, partner with some other individuals for league and gameplay. And as I mentioned earlier, still collecting that data to see exactly how do we move ahead, as well as not only from a programmatic standpoint, but from a financial standpoint, as we prepare for FY23 budget. And do you have any questions for Brian and myself?
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Rabadi, please.
So my questions will be a little off. I'm an old guy. The function of the Parks and Recs is more like open sports and other things, like with esports that you're trying to do. Are we gearing people to become a couch potatoes? It's my, you know, initial thought, you know, like, I know there are a lot of people who play. It's taken very seriously. At, when 20 years ago, when I was in university, we used to play. And that goes 12 to 15 hours straight. You are just hooked up to it. So wanted to ask, like, the three to nine, and how many people are we looking at to, for them to play?
Good evening, Council. The first question regards to are we trying to gear people to be couch potatoes or we are not? As this is going to be run through athletics, one of the things that we do want to try to concentrate on is how esports actually does mirror active sports. From the standpoint of learning how to work as a team, learning how to be inter collaborative with not only the individuals who are there with you, but also individuals who are online, we want to encourage everyone to practice good sportsmanship, understand that that is not all you're going to do all day long, and you have to be able to engage with other people. From the standpoint of whether our programming will allow us to be able to move forward and have in-person, we would look to try to, as Randy was saying, identify some of the things that we can do to help encourage active engagement from the standpoint of learning strategies, being out in the public, and being able to communicate those needs. Because esports does not only give people an opportunity to engage, it can lead to a career, whether it be in technology, whether it be in game development, English writing, anything of that nature. Those are the things that we want to try to focus on long term.
And this gaming, is it within the local network? Or is it outside too? Because you can play all across the globe.
For right now, we want to try to focus internally. But if we do go with a third party, we'll open it up to additional participants outside of Morrisville, outside of the state, within the country.
Okay. And I don't know what the usage, the timings of the senior center is. Is it a possibility that after hours, like this could be used there too, if it is, you have the computers there, and all you need is those gaming chairs and stuff? So it gives you more than just Wake Tech?
Do you want me to try to answer that right there? Based on my understanding of the current agreement that we have with the senior center and its usage, that would prohibit us to potentially have that in that space because it's not a part of the programming for the senior center.
No, but what, till what time is it programmed? That's my question. Is it like till 9:00? You have senior center programming?
Councilmember Garamella, we do have some evening programming that occurs there. That's one potential conflict that we could possibly work around. The bigger issue is, right now, we have the advantage of Wake Tech being willing to provide this equipment as part of a partnership. So we don't have to purchase equipment right now, and that has a price tag with it. And then there's also the issue, where would we store the equipment and the chairs and the other things that would be necessary for this esports venture? We don't have a tremendous amount of space in that building. Once we use that front room for activities and then the back room is set up, there's limited storage. So not saying we can't, but saying there are, there are challenges to overcome. And this opportunity at Wake Tech seems to be a more practical way to at least get started. And I think what the team has already discussed is, if this becomes successful, then it may gain a little bit of traction in terms of looking for additional space in town where we might provide it more directly.
Got it. Councilmember Rabadi, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I really appreciate the way you guys are thinking outside the box in ways to offer youth programming. That's, honestly, I think this is going to turn out to be one of those things that really puts us on the map, if you can make go of it. So congratulations. So some concerns that I have are, women are vastly underrepresented and often targets of harassment in the gaming world. So how are you gonna, what steps are you going to take to make the environment as inclusive as possible?
Right now, we do have a policy in place as far as, I guess, ensuring that appropriate behavior takes place within all of our programs. We would implement that same policy in esports. One of the things that we're looking to do is try to monitor the activities that we have, whether it be us providing services or an outside agency providing services through various kind of social media avenues. Right now, it's set up so that it will automatically start to catch different language or behaviors that are online. And so that way, we can target those individuals to be able to administer the necessary disciplinary policies.
So E A and Twitter both have those exact same policies. And I can tell you that there are myriad ways to get around them. So I would just really encourage you guys to, to dig into the roots of those problems and try to set our program up so that it's, it's not a factor. Also, I really like the three to nine timeframe. I mean, it seems to me that there's going to be a lot of kids kept out of trouble that you can get into between three and nine. So yeah, that is just an issue that I potentially wanted to bring up, just for you guys to start thinking about. Because I want, if we're going to do it, I want the program to be as inclusive as possible. And, you know, everyone should feel comfortable there.
One of the things that Brian and I did talk about last week is having staff to monitor that through those chats. So, you know, there'll, there'll be staff actually represented, you know, as they're playing. So, you know, that's the, that's the most important part, is having staff in there to kind of to monitor, you know, those chats.
Is it all going to be chats, no microphones, just the chats?
It will depend on the way we are able to set up our play. Right now, we're not quite sure what Wake Tech is going to enable us to do because they're having delays in there, I guess.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I have a few questions. First, what gaming platform is going to be used? Is it PC-based or is it PlayStation, Xbox, what?
We anticipate being able to use all of those. We are looking at trying to provide some time for individuals to go into Wake Tech and use their consoles. On one of the slides, you would see where there was just a picture of the wall. That's actually where they're going to have the monitors in place. Below those monitors will be tables for people to use the consoles. We actually do have one console already in-house that we will administer, well, allow them to use it in this space until we can figure out exactly how it's going to work out overall. There will also be PC gaming, I guess amenities there as well.
I guess I missed what you said about the console. What does that do?
The consoles? Depending on how Wake Tech enables us to be able to, I guess, log on to the internet, we will be able to do some console-based gaming, either via the internet, connecting different consoles, but also being able to do it in-house in their, in their facilities with consoles that either we can provide or that they will bring into the space themselves, meaning the participants.
Okay. And so like the age limit, how, I see nine years old. Well, this is just general background. So what's the age limit going to be for people that go into this, use this facility? And will it be limited? Or will it be like only nine to 12-year-olds play during this time? And only 13 to 18-year-olds?
Right now, due to COVID regulations, we will have limited space or limited slots for people to go into the site specifically. So depending on how we program, we do plan to at least split the ages up. So that is up to, I think it's nine to 12. And then once we get to age 13, which is then where the parents have a little more leeway to be able to allow their, their players to play online and play individuals that are not onsite. So we'll look at trying to make sure that we divide those players, well, those ages up accordingly.
Okay. And when you said that the staff would have a means to monitor the chat, would you be monitoring all online? Or will there ever be a staff physical presence in the room?
We plan to have staff physically present in the room. So if we were to have activities take place outside of the time that we were in the space, they would all be monitored through a chat at that point.
Okay. I'm just, Councilman Rabadi got me thinking, is like in that space, how are you going to prevent someone from being targeted by, I mean, but it sounds like you have it limited, bracketed by age groups. I wouldn't want a situation where a child could be targeted by a predator, or a child could be bullied or harassed. And those are considerations that I'm sure you guys are already thinking about.
Completely understand. Yes, that's one of the things we definitely do take into consideration across not only esports, but all of our athletic activities as well.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Ralph, please, followed by Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Excuse me. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I do share some of Councilmember Garamella's concerns that he brought up about, you know, whether this would lead to people just being couch potatoes and not doing stuff. But I think it is an innovative idea. My only thing is I just want to make sure that we're encouraging our youth to also stay active and to not play video games all the time. I'm the only kid in my family that I never played video games my whole life because I was so busy playing tennis tournaments and playing tennis. And I still today don't touch video games at all. And I do believe that too much video games with our youth hurts social skills. It hurts, you know, to leave more of a sedentary lifestyle, unless these video games could be like Wii Sports, where you're actually moving, you know, like physically moving, like tennis or golf and things like that. So I think just having a balance, well, you know, and it's just, that's just my personal belief. I know many people don't agree with me. I still today have never played a video game ever. I mean, maybe once or twice. So I just, I just feel like, you know, get out there and do stuff. But I guess I'm sort of old school that way. So but, you know, I think as long as it's balanced with physical activity for both our adults and our youth.
Thank you for your comments. The one thing that I will say is that you should know at this point, I've known your son since he's been in our programs. And I've always encouraged young people and adults to stay active. and I've always encouraged young people and adults to stay active. So that's one of the things that we'll continue to do in athletics in our department, is we try to provide more opportunities in various ways.
Everyone up here is very interested and engaged in this conversation and wants to be part of it. Mayor Pretend, followed by Councilmember Scroggins Johnson.
So I'm going to echo some of the concerns too. But again, I think you all, you know, are hearing this, and it's probably not new to you, if you've already thought a lot of this through. So that, I'll just say that, number one. I think there are some pitfalls that we need to be really careful about. Not to say I wouldn't move forward, obviously. I think, you know, having a partner like Wake Tech to help, and all the safety rails that you're going to put in place will be, will be good, hopefully. And I hear, as a mom, I wanted my kids out of the house too, doing something. I didn't want them home, sitting in front of a TV or a device or something. But, you know, not everybody can be a soccer player or a basketball player, and there are some skills here that if we do this right, and you talked about them, Brian, a lot of them. These are some skills that we can help our young people home, that will be really good for them as they, you know, grow and become adults. So, but I think there are some concerns. I have the same concerns about age difference and being careful of monitoring things, and... So anyhow, having said all that, I really do have a question too. So you talked about in the tier one goal was to conduct a needs assessment with the gaming community. So, and if you've said this already, I apologize, but do you know what the interest is out there? Do you have some idea of what the needs are in the community? Can, or is that something you're going to do now?
It's in combination. So during the pandemic, when we were closed down, when we were scheduled to have our junior basketball league, I did send out a survey to some of those participants, and they did respond, as well as the parents did respond to some of the questions that we were asking, in the terms of what types of games, whether it be PC or console, whether it was sporting games, whether it was more of the interactive games, kind of like, I guess Fortnite, if they would be interested in doing those things. So I did get some responses. I did not put them in the presentation, because they're over a year old now. So we will continue to try to get some feedback, once we start to engage with the public with this program in particular. So as we begin to put more information out, we'll start to get those same surveys out into the public to try to get some general information as to what they may be interested in, whether it be the parents who have similar concerns, much like I have myself, or it be the kids who are looking to participate, and what they might be interested in.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. And then my last comment, you know, this isn't out of the box, well, I think it's out of the box for me anyhow. So I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing the opportunity, but because it is so out of the box, and clearly, we're all engaged in questioning and wanting to know more, I would, I'd ask that maybe we get some kind of update in the future as to how the programming's going, you know, what problems there are or not, and hopefully not, and, you know, what the membership is, if that's the right word, in the program. I would, I would just ask for that as we move forward. And you can, on your timeframe, when you think that's appropriate, you've gathered information, if you come back and share with council. And a report would be fine too for me, but I would just ask for that.
Councilmember Scroggins Johnson, please.
Thank you, mayor. First, I would like to say what an innovative program, and it really fills a need. We are struggling a little bit with youth programming, you know, 12 to 18, and this does help with that, for that age group, and offers a college campus environment too. So, you know, there's cleverness in the location and the partnership, and there's a lot of win-wins for the cost sharing of this program as well. I have a rather unique insight. My brother-in-law actually develops games. And he is, and is, I think he's almost 40. So he's been doing this for almost 30 years. He started out in the movie industry, and he developed CGI. He worked on several major motion pictures. And then he transitioned into the gaming industry, and I thought he was definitely stepping down from the movies. But in fact, gaming is above the movie CGI. So this really is the next wave of where it's at, if you will. And gaming is a really bold and vibrant and growing area. So I commend you for embracing that. And I think Morrisville's going to be, again, on the edge of ingenuity and innovation in this space. Now, a lot of the council members have expressed concerns about safeguards, making sure that we have a safe, inclusive space, a supportive environment, checks and balances, and I think they're all very valid. But I want to admit that in my generation, we had recess a lot more minutes of the day than they do today. So we just have a different mindset and a different way of communicating in my generation than in the present generation, that rewires your brain to think a certain way. And this gaming is yet even another different way of communicating, working on teams, working together, strategizing. And I don't understand it because of my frame of reference, but I'm excited to see what this brings to our youth and what it brings to our town. So thank you very much for bringing this today.
You're welcome.
And Brian, we will take into consideration your concerns, and we'll definitely follow back up with some information, you know, once we get into it, probably a month, three or four, so we will come back and provide a report. So we do appreciate your voice.
Yeah, and I just have some observations. Thank you very much, this is very innovative. I know you guys did some virtual tournaments and stuff already during COVID. We got Epic Games over in Cary, so this area is going to be really big for gaming. I know that we have members of the chamber who are in esports already, so this is really a growing area. And I know we're having, it's always challenging to reach out to the teenagers and make sure that they're engaged. I, for one, I started with Atari, Callieco Vision, and television. I've gone through the gamut, so I'm the opposite of my colleague, Councilmember Ral. So I was spending some time on games. So I know that Minecraft is really big right now, Fortnite, Rocket League, things like that. So you guys are reaching the demographic. This is really important for problem-solving skills, goal-setting. So I think that this is really positive, and I know you guys are going to do it the right way. And you're really starting off smart, being with Wake Tech, leveraging that partnership. So we really appreciate your innovation, because you're making it happen for us and for our youth. So thank you very much for that. Great presentation, we look forward to hearing more about it and how it goes.
Thank you.
We have finally made it to item nine, administrative reports. There are two administrative reports tonight, a master sustainability plan update, and an updated COVID testing and vaccination information report. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has questions. I see Kimberly Conley has been very patient waiting for us. Do we have any questions for the sustainability side? Did I miss you before?
No, I just put this up.
Just put this up, okay.
I have a question.
Okay. Our sustainability coordinator, Kim Conley, can answer your questions.
Yeah, just one question. I wouldn't want you to have sat here all evening with, you know, for no point.
Thank you so much. No, I've learned a lot, it's been great.
So one question I had was, on the first page where it says, "In addition, the town's unified development ordinance was reviewed for additional opportunities to integrate sustainability initiatives." So what was the outcome of that, was of that review?
Sure. So if you remember back to when Ryan Eldridge was the intern over the summer, he presented to you his findings. And so there are a number of things that we're still considering based on that report. We're working with town administration, as well as the planning department, to really kind of go through those and see what we want to focus on. I'm not sure if that presentation could be shared again, I'm not sure why it couldn't, but perhaps we could do that.
Okay. And then my last question has to do with the phase three that you're in now, and the criteria matrix?
Yes.
So I know it says you're developing it, but can you share a little bit of what that is going to look like?
Absolutely, certainly. I actually worked with our consultant, Dr. Vicky Faust, on that today. So it is finalized, but I'd like to present it to the Sustainability Task Force first. But in essence, that criteria matrix will be used to vet and prioritize all of the different projects or actions that come from the sustainability plan. So they include things like, I can tell you what they are, I just don't want to share the weighted criteria yet. They include feasibility, so how feasible is the project? When you look at from legal considerations, political considerations, those types of things. Cost is another one of our pillars. Impact, what is the impact of the action or the goal? You know, does it, does it help, how does it help us reach the goals within the sustainability plan that we plan to set? We have stakeholder input. We plan to reach out to various stakeholders to ask their opinions of various actions or projects for consideration. So that's important. And then finally, we have alignment. And alignment is really synergy with all of the different plans that we have in the town. They really focus on land use, they focus on the comprehensive transportation plan, the smart city plan, the strategic plan. So we've gone through all of those plans and highlighted all the different ways environment or sustainability are part of those plans, because we want to help the town reach those goals, right? And it's symbiotic, right? They are going to help us reach our goals as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, I look forward to seeing the plan and the criteria matrix.
Thank you.
Yeah. Presenting alternatives to us will be pretty key, which is great.